7, 2025. Today's invocation will be given by Minister Charlene Roan of the Greater Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church. If everyone would please silence your cell phone, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would everyone bow your heads? Lord, we come before you with gratefulness. We're grateful that you never leave us, nor do you ever forsake us. We're grateful for the grace that you continue to pour out upon us. We thank you for making each of us here, every person that we meet, every citizen of this city and every city, in your own image with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for the calling that you have given each one of us to be good stewards over your creation and to love our neighbors as we love ourselves. We thank you for these servants, our mayor, our city attorney, our city manager, our city staff, as well as our city council members. We give you thanks for the way of service that they have chosen to take up on behalf of each citizen. Because we know you are omniscient, you know everything, you know that some of us here today in this meeting are carrying burdens, we're carrying joy, we're carrying hope, we're trusting that you and you alone can hold us together in your love and your peace. So, Lord, we ask that you teach us how to trust you more, more than our fears, trust you more than our wounds, and even our accomplishments. Teach us to trust you more. You've instructed us through your word to trust you in all of our heart and to lean not unto our own understanding and in all of our ways, every decision that we make and every step that we take to acknowledge you and that you would then direct our paths. So, you've also instructed us not to trust in our own wisdom, but to fear and to respect you. So, teach us, God, to trust you more. Lord, remind us that those in authority are first and foremost your servants, that honoring you and doing your will is our highest purpose, that any portion of power, any of us enjoy, is given to us by you, for you, and can be taken away by you. And so, we pray that you would be glorified through the decisions of our city council. We pray that we would have the eyes to see how our lives all are connected and how our common faith is upheld when we listen and respond to those most vulnerable among us. We pray that your kingdom would come in Beaumont as it is in heaven through your power working in each of our leaders, which are your servants. May your truth be revealed, may your light shine brighter, may the voices of those most silenced be heard loud and clear. Defend their cause, Lord, through this governing body. We pray for wisdom, strength, courage to do what is right and good for all citizens of our area. May the interests of others be placed above our own agendas. May we act with love for the common good. May we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person. We thank you again for this council, our mayor, our city attorney, the city staff, our first responders, our hospital staff, and all of those who worked to make this place that we call home a great city. It is in the name of Jesus we do pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May have roll call, please.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Protim Neil, Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, today we have one presentation from the City of Beaumont Communication Department, and then we're going to move up, work session to a presentation for Mural Fest following Tracy Kinnick.
We hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season, and we're excited about the coming year. And to start it off, the City of Beaumont invites residents and visitors alike to experience a vibrant and exciting celebration of the Lunar New Year with a traditional lion dance performance right in the heart of our city. Join us here at Beaumont City Hall Wednesday, January 29th, beginning at 3:30 PM for an unforgettable cultural experience that promises to ring in the year of the snake with energy, joy, and good fortune. The event is free and open to the public, so gather your family and friends and come ready to celebrate this joyous occasion with us. Start 2025 off right with our Justice in January movie series at the Jefferson Theater. We've got a lineup of iconic films you won't want to miss. This Friday, it's Pee-wee's Big Adventure, followed by A Bug's Life and The Searchers. Grab tickets at beaumonteventstx.com. It's an election year for the City of Beaumont with a general election coming up May 3rd. If you're interested in running for mayor, a council member for wards one through four, or the two at-large positions, you must be at least 21 years old. Submit a notarized application, appoint a campaign treasurer, and file with the city clerk's office by Wednesday, January 15th at 5:00 PM. You can find more information, including the needed forms for candidates and campaign treasurers, on the City of Beaumont's website. And finally, with the cold weather upon us and more expected to come this week, the city is making several efforts to protect those who don't have a way to get out of the elements. The city is providing warming stations through our transit system. We're also partnering with Henry's Place and the Salvation Army to make sure our vulnerable population is able to get out of the elements. The Salvation Army is open for dinner and overnight stays. Henry's Place will then open for breakfast and lunch, and during the cold weather, both are extending their hours to make sure they overlap, and those who need to be out of the cold can stay indoors. The city is also offering our bus service to get people to these facilities throughout the night at no charge to them, and there's more information provided on the city's Facebook page for those who need it. And I also would like to remind everyone to please check on your neighbors during this time, also protect your pets who may be outdoors so that they have a warm place to stay. If you're using a space heater, remember the key word there is "space," so don't put those in a room with children or around bedding that could become combustible, and also if you're using a generator, to make sure that that's outdoors, never indoors or around windows or doors, so we can prevent carbon monoxide poisoning. We want everyone to stay warm, but also to be safe in the new year. And that's all I have for our announcements.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to have a presentation on the Mural Fest, and I see Mrs. Emily Wheeler, who is Director of Event Services, coming forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I've been working with Min, who is the promoter, the local promoter for Mural Fest, and as you all know, Mural Fest has been a really vibrant addition to our entire community, not just downtown. They have an excellent plan to use our downtown mostly around the Civic Center this year, the weekend of March 8th, and I've been working closely with them on event logistics. They're here to tell you a lot about what they have planned, but in their plan is using the Civic Center and using the area similar to how we've produced Juneteenth and Viva Fest the last few years. I've said it many times from this podium, the more opportunities we have to bring people further into downtown, the better, as it goes nicely with our future plans for downtown, downtown development, the riverfront. We know that there is discussion about big plans for a new convention center, and I think that what they have planned plays in nicely with our future goals. They will be looking for your blessing to move forward with their plans, and if you do give them your blessing, then they will come back to get some additional approvals in the future. Before Min and Jay come up, Freddie from the CVB and her team are here to give you a little bit of the historical data on the event and how it's impacted our community and tourism.
Thank you.
The CVB has been involved with Mural Fest since its inaugural year, when we received the Skills of Justice mural down on Arlene Street and hosted a Kids Zone on Calderon 8th Street, to hosting it near Jefferson Theater and the Art Museum, which brought even more people in the downtown area and introduced the art cubes that we have seen in the past years. So, last year, when it was a two-day event, not only at the event center, but the Great Lawn, even Terrill Park, it was great for Terrill Park because they received a colorful walkway for anyone visiting Terrill Park there. And then, right down to the beautiful mural that you see and serves as the gateway to Beaumont, the Beaumont mural at Park and Calder. And each year, Mural Fest has grown, and we've supported Min Dai in his efforts. Today, we're here to support Min with statistical information. We have our marketing director, Sadie Atha, to present that information so that you can see just the facts and figures of what Mural Fest brings to the community. Sadie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and the city manager for letting us speak about this. So, like Freddie was saying, the CVB has helped since the beginning with downtown Beaumont near the Jefferson, the Art Museum of Southeast Texas, and the Event Center. We really wanted to focus on making Beaumont a canvas of creativity and, like Emily said, showing not just downtown, but murals across the city, highlighting and beautifying our city. Can we go two slides next, to the next two slides? Yeah. Yes. Next one, perfect. Thank you. And so, just to kind of highlight about Mural Festival in general, it establishes Beaumont as a vibrant arts destination. So, from the tourism side, it attracts visitors and enhances tourism. People come to see murals, see public art, enhances the city's visual appeal, fosters community engagement, and boosts local economic growth. It strengthens community pride and engagement, and it also creates public art installations. And another reason they're so great for the tourism is that they're year-long and they're free for the public, so it is a great tourist attraction. And here is, we partner with Zartico, they're a great tourism partner for us, and so here are some statistics about the attendance. Thirty-one percent of the visitors were from out of town, 42% of the visitors spent money at local businesses, so that's almost half of businesses around the area were being impacted by this visitor impact. And then, 34% of visitors came from out of state, and this, again, is based on data provided by Zartico for the weekend of Mural Fest from last year. And then, lastly, the impact of Mural Fest is infinite to our community. It highlights our beautification as a destination for residents and visitors, and we really hope to partner with local vendors, local artists, to really showcase all the beautiful parts of Beaumont. And then, again, also has cultural enrichment, and through these festivals, we have over 47 murals throughout the entire city. And then, the handout that we provided is additional CVB marketing efforts that we have completed with marketing analysis. We were able to be on the cover of Texas Events' Highways Calendar, which is distributed to over 65,000 people, so it's additional coverage that really shines a light on all the stuff that Beaumont does. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, we're here to support Min and his efforts. It does contribute to our budget with overnight stays, and with that said, Min is here to introduce some of the artists that he's going to be working with and kind of highlight some of their work. So, without further ado, we'd ask Min Dai to come up, please.
Mayor, city council members, city manager, city attorney, thank you guys for having us today. First, I'd like to thank the CVB for the continued partnership along with the city for your support, city events, and allowing the growth of the festival. As Em said, we're here today to get your blessing, allowing us to not only use the Civic Center as this year's festival site, but also as the focal canvas for the festival. We have come up with a two-year plan that can contribute to the updating and the upgrading of the Civic Center. Civic Center is basically the host of those all things Beaumont, and with what we have in store, we hope that it'll allow the community to have pieces of artwork that they can enjoy for years to come. With the city's goal of beautifying downtown, development with the riverfront, and also future plans for the Civic Center such as possible hotels, we feel like what we are contributing not only is going to contribute to that cause, but we've also noticed that there has been budget set aside for the updating of the interior of the Civic Center, and with the festival, we can not only cut the costs of what you guys are doing inside there, and also bring in something permanent that's going to have a lasting impact and one of a kind that won't, no other city would be able to have. The plan is, we also plan on adding a new, something new to the festival this year, which is going to be a public mosaic artwork. With Jay as one of the nation's leading mosaic artists, and him being the curator for the festival, our plan is to do a first-ever Southeast Texas community mosaic project during the festival inside the Civic Center, where the community, kids, families can contribute to the piece and have their hands in a piece of history. If we do get your blessing, we'll definitely be back, present all designs and details for you guys to approve, and with that respect, I'm going to let Jay introduce you to the talent that we have planned on coming in this year.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you again for the privilege and honor to just come to Beaumont and add a little color. Like Min said, I've been involved with the Mural Fest since the beginning. I've been involved as more of a curator rather than an artist. I've been a muralist for about 20 years, and I've done works all over the world. I'm also the panel member for the Austin's Art in Public Places, so I make public art, you know, my job, and I do it day in and day out, so I'm always trying to bring the very highest caliber of work to the city, because I know that a lot of people from Beaumont maybe can't travel all over the world, but we try to bring the world to Beaumont and the best we can. So, I think we have a little presentation with some samples of the artists. Pull that up, please. Yeah. And just bear in mind, the portfolios that you're going to see, they're not designs planned for the Civic Center or Beaumont particularly, they're just portfolio of the artist's work, past work, and just showing the caliber of their work, their styles, where they're from, and just a little bit about them. But while we're pulling that up, I'll show you this. So, this is a sample of the mosaic like Min was talking about. Might not look like much right now. Up close, it's just little glass squares of tile, kind of like what you might see in a swimming pool or a spa, but it can live outdoors, and it's one of the most accessible art forms. Like Min mentioned, we want to do this with the children and families, communities of Beaumont. I think one of the most, the best highlights of past years is, you know, a mural like with Inés Alvidrez, the local Beaumont muralist, like when kids can come and help paint those murals and everything, but it can get a little messy. So, the beauty of the mosaic is that they're glass squares, they're not going to spill paint on the ground or anything, so we can do it anywhere, maybe inside the Civic Center. And then, at that point, when we assemble all the squares together, it will create this monumental piece that also lasts forever, because unlike mural painting, which will fade over time, you know, mosaics last a lifetime. So, yeah. Okay, that's all right. Yeah, yeah.
We're having trouble, we can just... Yeah, it's on our screens. Weird. I can peek on one of your screens.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Yeah, what's the first one? I'm trying to think of the first slide.
Yeah, you want to, you think more time will get you lined out, and we can come back after...
If I can see what slide, I mean, I can at least talk to you. I wish everybody could see.
The world-class artist lineup, Beaumont 2025.
Okay, so there's 13 artists there. Yeah. Interesting. Oh, perfect. Yeah, that's all I need, a cue point. Okay. Everybody zoom in on that one. Okay, so it's a bit fewer artists than previous years. We've usually had about 16 artists. This year, we have 12, 13, myself included, for the mosaic. Artists from all over the world, about half of whom are based here in the US, and then some who will be traveling from elsewhere. We can go to the next slide for... Yeah, okay. So, Bubblegum from Spain. You know, a lot of these artists, social media followings, speak for themselves. I mean, they're popular for a reason, because they yield spray paint and brushes as some of the best in the world. His is a very ornamental style. He can do wildlife, portraiture. He integrates with the architecture quite well, which may be a good choice for the Civic Center. We can go to the next. Yeah, that's more of his work. Let me go to the next one. Okay, Ladanya, she's from Colombia, very vibrant, colorful, celebrations of nature, of femininity, really complex compositions that add just joy and vibrance to any building and any locale. Okay, next slide. And you can see the scale of some of their work, you know, being four, five, 10 stories tall, so, you know, the scale of the Civic Center being two or three stories, and whatever else we can find is absolutely no problem for these artists to complete within a week. Next slide. James Buller. I'm really excited about him being on board, because he actually runs and hosts the preeminent mural and street art podcast in the world. He's been doing it for about the last four or five years. He's had over 200 guests on his podcast, and he has agreed interest to host some interviews here in Beaumont. So, what that'll do is it'll spread even further the reach that you're getting, you know, tourists to come in, yes, and see the murals physically, but then you're getting people to hear about Beaumont through these interviews that he's going to be hosting live at the festival. And he's an amazing artist. Okay, next slide. Figurative, you know, realism is unmatched, so it just adds beauty and grace to any scenario. Okay, next slide. Chelsea Sornin, she's out of DC, much like Liza Fishbone, who painted the, I think it was The Salad Shop, I forget the... Yeah. Very floral, very colorful, fun. Kids love it, families love it. Okay, next slide, please. Yeah, more of her work there. Next slide. Choce, out of Mexico. Again, another sort of side note to the curation is bringing people here who can sort of spread the Beaumont message, and as you know, over the last four years, especially since Mural Fest started, lots of other artists in town have been getting commissioned to do works in restaurants and private residences and such, getting art shows. So, Choce actually runs a mural festival outside of Mexico City, and they invite 80 artists from around the world every year to go paint. So, my thinking is, you know, as he's an artist as well, if he comes and participates in Beaumont Festival, he can bring artists down to Mexico next year from Beaumont. So, again, furthering this international connection. Okay, next slide, please. Yep, next slide. Okay, Kiatama, he's a South African artist. He's actually a younger up-and-comer, but with a very striking and timeless feel. Again, a brush painter that stylizes things for place, very site-specific, and again, I think he might also be a good choice for works on the Civic Center. Okay, next slide. And you can see the scale of it there, being six and seven stories tall. Okay, next slide. Kristi McCarthy, I forget actually where she hails from, but she is very much a social practice artist, so she puts a lot of the community into her work, does a lot with school and children, and is very colorful. Next slide, please. Okay, you can see the quality of the work there, just beautiful stuff. Okay, next slide. Ms. Data, this is an artist out of Austin. He's a realist painter, but he actually does this with spray paint, amazingly enough, sort of caricature-like. Next slide, please. And there you go, you can see some classics like from the days of the Confused Movie, or there's a Houston Monument to a Fallen Veteran that he painted two years ago. Okay, next slide. Motique, he's another artist out of Mexico. He's been one of the big brand collaborators with brands like Nike and Coca-Cola. He brings a more abstract feel, maybe something that'll be good for one of the cubes, temporary walls, or maybe, you know, sort of a little behind, you know, alley type of spot somewhere in the downtown area. Okay, next slide. Yep, next slide. Rex Hamilton, he's a black artist out of Austin, Texas, paints very colorful, vibrant, community-based work. That's a picture from his mural in the Moody Center in Austin. Next slide. He's also painted the YMCA and various other community centers. Next slide. Samara Barks, she's a black artist who is also an illustrator and also a sculptor. She brings, again, sort of a vibrance and illustrative quality to her work, and I think we'll just, again, trying to bring, think about diversity for male and female, for lots of different races and cultures to come together and express themselves in Beaumont as a reflection of the community that's already here. Okay, next slide. Yep, next slide. Yasmin, she's out of San Miguel de Allende, very soft and feminine touch, again, with portraiture, lots of naturalist tones, looks very good with the earth environment, so I think maybe along the waterfront, her color choices would be very appropriate. Okay, next slide. See more of her work there, next slide. And finally, they put me in there, they throw me in the mix, I'm doing a mosaic, hopefully doing a mosaic this year. And again, just to reiterate, this is going to be one that's hands-on, that lots of community members can participate in, that will then hopefully be displayed somewhere publicly for everybody to enjoy. And also, little side note benefit, I'm actually on the Texas Commission of the Arts' approved touring roster, which means half of the mosaic will automatically be paid for by the State of Texas, Texas Commission of the Arts Fund. So, it's really a small budget item for, I think, a big impact to the community. Okay, next slide. Just some examples of my past work, next slide. And I don't know if, I guess we don't have the video, there's a little video I wanted to play, recap last year's epic festival, but if we don't have that, it's all good. So, sorry that everybody in the audience couldn't see that, but hopefully you guys can. Yeah. So, I guess, yeah. Any questions or...
So, as you see, we highlighted some of the walls. Our goal was to paint three of them being directly above the entrance of the Civic Center, and also the long foyer wall that's directly above the cassettes stand. We have two walls picked out on the entrance side, and our goal is to split this up into two years, touch all the sections that possibly won't be developed when you guys do plan on developing with the hotel, so we'll coordinate with it. And I just want to put it out there, these artists are all, that have come on board, they want, have already allocated their time for the festival, just needing us to let them know if we have approval to use the building. And also, this year is also the first year that we have a national sponsor that's already on board, and Monster Energy has already approved sponsorship for the festival, as they have heard the news through the last few years, they want to be a part of the City of Beaumont, they want to bring their national presence to Beaumont. And again, I just want to thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to possibly host it here, hoping we can continue the growth of the Mural Fest, and the goal was not just community, and city has given a lot for the festival, and this is our way of giving back to the city.
Well, thank you, and I'm sorry everybody wasn't able to see the, other than through our city attorney's screen there, but does anybody have any questions? I know Mural Fest has been a great success and certainly appreciate... Are we back? Okay. So, and so, Councilman Turner.
You got us mixed up.
Well, hit him right up here, I think.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing something consistently to the City of Beaumont. You know, often we see things come and go, but you guys have been pretty consistent in, you know, trying to do positive things for the City of Beaumont, not just downtown, but throughout the city. With the things that you guys are waiting on us to approve, just specifically, I understand we've been through this process almost every year, but exactly what are y'all waiting on and looking for for us to do, for us to move forward? Are we going to get a further presentation from staff, or what's the next steps? Can anybody assist me with that?
Your mic's off. Yeah, evidently, things are turning straight ahead. Straight ahead.
Okay, it's green now. Um, I think what we're looking for is, because they're asking to paint on the interior lobby, this lobby on the side, at the Civic Center, and then also on a prominent wall, um, near Main Street on City Building, that you give them approval to move forward with getting sketches for what that would look like. But it costs them money to do that. So if council says, we don't want anybody painting on the Civic Center, then they know that they need to shift their focus. If you say, that might be interesting, let's see what that looks like, then they're gonna come back and give you art to approve.
Well, I personally think that sounds fabulous and, uh, appreciate the, and, and getting a chance to view. You wanna go, you wanna run it back? Yeah, we, we've done that, uh, yeah. So, uh, any input? Councilman Durio, were you about to speak? You need to turn your mic.
Yes, sir. Thank you for getting my name right. I was just wondering, uh, if it wouldn't take too long, y'all don't want to run through it so the citizens can see it that's here?
We can post it also. We can post it on the city website if y'all want, also. Up to you.
All right. I think sharing it on the social media website would be great.
Didn't get to see it.
All right, any other input? Or how does everybody feel about get, seeing the drawings for the exterior of the building and the interior?
Well, I, I say, uh, they prepared this, their opinion, uh, folks that put time and effort into it. Uh, just because there's a malfunction, I think they deserve the right to allow those that are here to see. Uh, it's nothing but time.
All right. Well, let, let's go ahead and do it then. It's fine with me. I got a nap before the meeting today.
But in the meantime, I do want to say thank you. Uh, I've had many comments of, uh, folks coming into Beaumont and they've seen the murals that are down now. And, you know, each time I pass, uh, I tend to get chills every now and then and looking at how profound some of the paintings are. So this has been good. It can only get better. And so I thank you and everyone that's associated with it, uh, for their efforts and their time. And thank you for making Beaumont the choice to do this. So, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And I wanted to add, while you guys are taking a look at this, the reason we're asking is, I want the city's blessing in being partner of the festival to give us permission, um, such iconic building that hosts, like I said, everything that is Beaumont. And our goal is to go forward, if we have your blessing, the goal is to provide, we have very specific topics that we gave these artists, such as, um, the Nages River, the Riverfront Development, Tevis Landing, the history of Beaumont. Those were the four guidelines that these artists were given. And these artists know that. So over the years, normally they were allowed to paint really what they wanted to without any restrictions. We're still not giving them restrictions, but we're giving them specific topics that they need to stick to, since it is a city-owned building and we operate out of that building. So I just want everybody to know that, that we did set guidelines for what they need to propose in their artwork. And like, as I said, you know, we have to pay these artists to provide the designs that can absolutely be tweaks and adjustments if needed. And our goal is, if everything's okay, we're gonna move forward, have them produce the designs, come back, get the approval, and they're gonna move forward with what you guys are actually seeing. So everybody will be able to see what's actually going on the building, unlike, unlike a mystery like previous years where no one knows what they're painting.
So, yeah, Councilman Tammy?
So when we saw the blank walls in the presentation, the inside of the Civic Center, that's where you were contemplating, uh, the, uh...
So for these example, our goal is the three separate foyer directly above the entry. Um, there's, like I said, you guys already have budgeted plans. We paint the interior. And instead of just painting it, we can really give you guys a one-of-a-kind piece that's gonna be way less, even less than what you guys have budgeted to paint that, as the festival is gonna provide the talent to put that in such as a coat of paint. And these individual spots, along with the wide foyer directly across from it, or it's our focal point for this year, along with two corner walls that are directly outside, and our goal, the, the long wall directly above the top, and this main wall that's next to the sign itself, and also on the catty corner, our goal is to use these as the first phase. And once everybody sees what we're putting on, then we continue the second phase, which will finish off the rest of the building that's not gonna be, um, touched by demo if you guys do demo with the attachment add-on. So we are planning with knowing that possibly you guys will be adding a hotel to the Civic Center.
Okay. I would take from, uh, I think everybody, I'm not hearing any ideas that this isn't a good idea, so we would love to see that. And we appreciate your commitment and the amount of energy, time, and, uh, the talent that you've brought in over the last few years. And it's, it's consistently grown, but as you say, after the festival leaves, we still have, uh, a beautiful downtown.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we're gonna move into public comments, and now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. Uh, you may make public comments on the consent agenda or the regular agenda items, items one through five and nine and ten, or other topics, but items six through eight have already been heard in public hea- hearing. Therefore, citizens cannot speak on items six through eight. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, your city and state. Uh, you have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium. The red light will come on when your time is up.
Jenny Simon.
And as she comes up, I'd like to remind people that myself or council cannot respond whenever comments are being made, but someone from, uh, the city staff will be in touch with you to make sure we can follow up.
Jenny Simon. She left. Um, Kate, I think that's Hambricht.
Kate Hambricht, Seven Cheska Hollow, Beaumont, Texas. I'm the Jefferson County Historical Commis- Commission Marker Chair. Good afternoon. In nineteen seventy-six and seventy-seven respectively, Texas historical markers were approved for each of Nancy Tevis, Beaumont's earliest seller, along with her husband Noah, and Beaumont lumber mill city of the nineteenth century. The markers were installed in Beaumont's New Riverfront Park in the early nineteen eighties, but were subsequently washed away during Tropical Storm Harvey in twenty seventeen. Replacement markers were ordered out of the Jefferson County Historical Commission's own budget and have been in storage for the last five years, awaiting reinstallation. During this period, the markers have not served a useful purpose or educated anyone on our early Beaumont history. To date, Riverfront Park has not been rebuilt, although repairs are underway. However, with the increasing severity and complexity of storms along the Gulf Coast, there is legitimate concern that any markers placed in such close proximity to the river may once again wash away or otherwise be damaged beyond repair. At the present time, the recost- the cost to replace just one of these markers is twenty-three hundred dollars, and the current production time is up to fifteen months. Ideally, the Jefferson County Historical Commission would like to ensure the safety of its existing markers and fund new marker topics within its annual budget, so that more of our area's fascinating history can be made known to our citizens. The Jefferson County Historical Commission feels that the two markers in question can be displayed with equal interpretive merit at the city-owned Downtown Event Center. This location, just four blocks from the river, is visited by many of our Beaumont citizens during special events or other outings. It is also easily accessible to members of our community. The event center is the site of a former rail yard and is also located just one block south of the former rail lines of the Texas and New Orleans Railroad, which additionally headline servicing the many lumber mills up and down the Nages River, making this a particularly appropriate location for the lumber mill city of the nineteenth century marker. While the site of Noah and Nancy Tevis's home on the bluff overlooking Beaumont has never been accurately determined, the location of the current event center at Jefferson and Wall Streets is within the original Beaumont land grant, of which Nancy Tevis was one of the donors. The event center is therefore also quite suitable as a location for the Nancy Tevis marker. Following the city council's approval of the relocation of these two markers, this request will next be submitted to the Texas Historical Commission for its final authorization. Jefferson County provides support to the Jefferson County Historical Commission by installing our historical markers. In the present case, Precinct Four will install these two markers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Jackson.
Good afternoon. I live at fifty-six fifty Jackie Lane, my zip is seven-seven-seven-one-three. I'm really not sure if I'm at the right forum to address my problem. I've tried to get it resolved. I called the city manager's office first, talked to someone, and they said, oh, well, we've heard the same issue presented, and I'll talk to someone about it. The third time I called, the lady said, oh, you called the wrong office. You need to talk to the DOT. I called that office, talked to someone. She said, well, you're at the right place. I'll give you the maintenance department. I talked to the maintenance supervising. The issue is, there are people who are defacing the, uh, walls of the interstate that support the overpasses. And, uh, there's a name on, they're putting names on it. And I just don't think anybody's name should be on it, not even mine. But anyway, I just want someone to get that taken care of, but they, it was, I guess, pressure washed on the, on the interstate. But, uh, I would, I hope this is the last stop and that you can resolve my problem. If not, you can refer me to someone who can. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Landry Roundtree.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Happy New Year's to all you and city staff. I'm here today as, uh, figuratively, please, as a, uh, postman, just delivering a letter from a, a good friend of mine. And, uh, during the, uh, public hearing on a couple of issues, I'd like to address item number ten. It's from a friend of mine by, uh, Mr. Curtis Anderson at fifty-one fifty Laurel. And he asked me to come by. Reason he asked me is, he's seventy-nine years old. He faces several, uh, medical issues. And, uh, he didn't feel like he'd be able to stand up here. But, uh, basically, he's, uh, been, I think, at that address for about fifty-four, fifty-five years. And, uh, he realizes there's an issue there that y'all are addressing. And he asked me to come and ask if he could have some more time, uh, to resolve it. I think this has been an ongoing problem, but I think, I found Kurt to be a, a man of his word. And he said, if y'all could give him to May first to resolve these issues at this residence, uh, he, I've offered to help him and my family help him, but, uh, you know, sometimes how older people are. Uh, they, uh, want to do a lot of things herself. And so he's asking for an extension, if y'all could, to resolve this and, uh, give him a little bit more time. And he said, if you could, he'd sure appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Jennifer Trinbeth.
Jennifer Trinbeth, nine-nine-nine Calder, seven-seven-seven oh one. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman. Um, I'm coming you today, today as a downtown business owner instead of with my usual Historical Commission hat. Kate did an excellent job already on that. I really just wanted to take a moment and share my appreciation for the staff at the city. Um, I think a lot of negative, uh, talk is perpetuated. But, um, in our process, which started last April in opening this live music venue and retail business, the staff in the Planning and Community Development Department has been amazing to work with. It's unique that the staff wants to be a resource for businesses coming into town as opposed to, um, you know, just people answering emails blindly behind a desk, which is what you see in a lot of other cities. And I just thought that everybody really should know how wonderful, uh, they're doing, how hard they're working, and how easy it has made the process. Um, we're thrilled to be in downtown. We're excited to work with the Boomtown Festival, with Mural Fest, with DB CAD's, um, Spring Arts Fest. And, uh, the path to being here was really made possible by your staff. So, great job to you and great job to y'all. And that's it.
Thank you.
And Daniel Campisi. Did I pronounce your last name correctly? Thank you.
Hello, council members. Mayor West. As some of you may recall, last year I stood before this council twice to highlight alarming truths about the rise in child custody cases impacting the youth in our community. Each time, I emphasize that in Texas, this offense is classified as a felony, punishable by up to six months in jail. I also shared that our city has a five-year average of two-hundred-and-forty-six cases annually, about five per week. Yet, of those thirteen-hundred cases, Beaumont Police Department issued only seventy-two criminal reports, and shockingly, not a single one was forwarded to the DA's office for prosecution. Now, here we are in a new year, and unfortunately, the proposal I submitted to adopt House Bill nine-six-nine has yet to make it onto the council's agenda. Today, I am to shed light on the root cause of this problem, a legal loophole that allows these numbers to grow year after year due to a lack of accountability for offenders and the agencies responsible for addressing the issue. Here's how the city currently handles these cases. When an officer responds to a custody interference incident, they verify the custody order, confirm which parent should have custody, and check if the child is present. If the child is not made available to the rightful parent, the officer typically issues an event card, which simply documents the situation without further action. If the aggrieved parent requests a criminal report, they are often told that the matter is civil, not criminal, as this is the department's standard procedure for handling such cases. In cases of repeated violations, some officers may issue a criminal report with the genuine intent to help the affected family. These reports are then handled by the Beaumont Police Department Special Crimes Unit. However, they are often treated as civil matters and are closed. This means that no case is open, no report is forwarded to the DA's office, and no path to prosecution exists, allowing the cycle to continue. This loophole has caused families in our community to suffer with growing number, so year after year. Um, as a result, offenders face no consequences, leaving families without recourse. That's why I'm asking this council to amend Chapter Twelve of the City of Beaumont's Code of Ordinances to introduce a new section that imposes civil penalties for interference with child custody, aligning with the provisions of House Bill nine-six-nine passed by the Texas Legislature in the last session. Thank you, Mayor West, council members, and city manager for providing me the opportunity to bring this issue to you today.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'm Dylan Richardson.
Good afternoon, council. I was leaving Kroger's yesterday, driving through the parking lot, and I spotted two gutted fish located at the front of Longhorn Wicker. If you kept up with the news regarding candidacy announcements, then you probably know an at-large candidate happens to own Longhorn Wicker. And while I'm sure this happened to be a mere coincidence, I do fancy myself a romantic, as I do try to find the meaning behind everything. And as a man of faith, I happened upon this being a message from God, a message to the candidate informing him of his impending victory that will launch him into the seat which the future mayor now presently holds. Unfortunately, due to the lack of council influence, it will also introduce him to a city hall where much fishy business occurs. One must think that there is something fishy about a mayor and a few of his peers voting to approve a city manager's raise and even increases in his retirement, somehow turning a total blind eye to his active participation in budget manipulation. One must think there is something fishy about one of the mayor's peers being a man who has run his own ward into the ground over a forty-year period, who now has the temerity to vie to do the same in a citywide office. One must think there is something fishy about a mayor who shot down the mere mention of downtown development in his campaign for the mayoral seat, but now that he has since proven ineffective in things of consequence... proven ineffective in things of consequence, he now stakes his claim as the leader of downtown development, which was propagated by the very man in question today. One must think there is something fishy about a council agreeing to continue to enable a man who has put the city of Beaumont in handcuffs and played Monopoly with its buildings for longer than I've been alive. I digress. We do have two mayoral candidates vying for the throne. One has a master's degree in divinity from SMU, and the other is lead pastor and at the helm of one city church located off East Texas. These men both seem to have subscribed to the lesson of turning the other cheek, but I must say, on behalf of everyone, city business is no place for this lesson. The city of Beaumont is tired of being slapped in the face by greedy developers, a self-serving city manager's office, and a couple of grandstanding councilmen led by a haughty and aloof mayor. I implore, for at least four of you to instead turn to a story of Jesus in the temple. As Jesus's duty was to serve his Father God, a councilman's duty is to serve their citizens. A temple was created to honor God, and a city hall was created to honorably conduct city business. In both instances, the structures have been corrupted, engulfed in fishy business dealings while leaders poison their population with misinformation of false promises, so much so that one must think that Jesus, or even four of you council members, would come into this very hall and flip tables, call this place a den of thieves, and instill change. I implore that at least four of you start the new year off right, sending a message to all developers who bring about urban blight and then victimize themselves in hopes of one day profiting off public monies. Let that message declare that if you are unwilling to produce an engineer's report stating that the building is stable, which promotes public safety, and then also make excuses regarding protracted delay, you will have to win in court. Leaders of the city, tell us that you will no longer waste time on doing favors for those who do Beaumont none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Williams.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. I'm here today to share a little bit about an event that is very close to my heart and that I'm an organizer of, the Southeast Texas Whiskey Festival. This is our third year putting the event on. In the first two years, thousands of people, local and some from out of state and out of town, have traveled to Beaumont to attend, to enjoy unique spirits, whiskeys, and other products. But the event is not just about whiskey, it's about raising money to find a cure for Duchenne muscular dystrophy. It's a rare and devastating disease that affects thousands of families across the country and the world, including my own. And so I've brought some tickets today for you guys to distribute amongst yourselves and come out and see, see what we put on. It's a good time and good community event. Even if you're not a, a drinker, there's plenty of options, good food, live music. It's right next door here at the Civic Center this Saturday. And so I'd, I'd invite you to come out and see what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Wharton. He left? I have no, I have no one else here.
All right. With that, our public comments are closed. Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. On F is a, it's a fire truck that we bought back in 2021. I'm going to get it pulled back up real quick. Mr. Manager, my question is, is this typical that, I know we paid for this back in October, even though we ordered it in 2021, to go back and refund ourselves?
Duncan might not know, June might not know the answer to that. Let me check on that, council member, and I'll get back with you. If we're that chief, do you know how that's funded?
Truck in question was just put in service engine six and go back, and it's refinanced through the Kansas Bank over a five-year lease period. We usually typically have a couple of fire trucks on lease, a lease falls out, and a new one comes on.
Okay, so, so my question, i- it's typical to, to pay for it and then finance it after the fact?
That would be a question from finance.
Okay, I've just, I've been here six years and never seen that before. The thing, what's, what's bringing this up for me is I just don't recall doing a reimbursement resolution for it.
That will have to come from the finance division on that part.
Do you know if we did that, Mr. Duncan?
No, sir. This, so this, this resolution was taken care of by Cheryl Ray, so I was not a part of the financing from that. But we, we were curious about that as well. So it is, apparently, we were told that we do pay for the truck upfront, and then we are reimbursed, and then we make payments to the truck over the years. And so in the budget book, you'll see this as a new payment listed for next year's budget. So we do pay for the truck upfront, we provide proof of payment to the, to the lender, and then they reimburse us, and then we make those debt payments over year like you normally would.
And I don't doubt that, that's fine, but I, whenever you borrow, whenever you pay for it, if you're going to reimburse yourself, you still have to do a reimbursement resolution at the time of doing it.
Yes, sir, we can look into that, make sure it happens.
Thanks.
If it pleases the council, we can table us and bring it back for next meeting.
And that's, yes.
If you okay, Councilman Neal, I don't mind us pulling that item and table it until we get further accurate information, we can make an accurate decision.
And I have one more question on that, too. On the two different banks that bid it, one was 5.7, one was 4.5. I see that you're knocking off the 4.5, saying they didn't give us sufficient information. You know what was lacking on that? Because that adds up over a million dollars.
I think this was hell about Cheryl, she'll know the detail, that if we could bring it back, we can get you that answer.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we're going to table.
Are we pulling?
Yeah. We'll table F until the next meeting. And with that, all in favor of approving the consent agenda minus F that will be brought back to us, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council consider resolution supporting the relocation of two stated historical, historical markers, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
And there's a second? Is there, there is a motion and a second for approval of item number one? Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number six to the contract with Callan Marine Limited for the Riverfront Park Restoration Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second. There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
With this being change under number six, is it still within the original budget?
Yes, sir. We're, had the funding, we had a million-dollar contingency fee, and so we're deducting the amount from that contingency. And so we're still going to have more than adequate, so the total contract amount still is not changing once we deduct that from the contingency fee. And this is still primarily funded by FEMA, TIDAM, and the TCEQ.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Mayor, can I get, I'm sorry, I missed the second on the motion.
It was Councilman Durio, I believe.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. May we have the reading of item number three?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Bryce Star Contracting, Inc., of Beaumont for the Fannin Street and 11th Street Storm Sewer Point Repair and Cavity Repair Emergency Project.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. For City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to use transit revenue, vehicle services for emergency evacuations during natural or man-made disasters following an imminent threat or an emergency declared by the president, governor, or the mayor of the city of Beaumont, or in emergency situations requiring immediate action. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Mr. Manager, I know we've experienced this in the past. Has staff had the opportunity to kind of deep dive and look at, to the success of this and the, the emergency management or anyone play a role in us making this decision on today?
Yes, sir. So we met with Ms. Nobles, our emergency management coordinator, and we came up with utilizing, for this instance, the cold weather incidents that's happening this week, to use transit staff and also our paratransit vans to operate at the, during the night hours. And I know that she's here, and she can, you know, give some more technical assistance or details if you have further questions on that.
Yeah, I kind of would like, you know, further details, just to make sure we are kind of going with the expert when it comes to making these type of decisions and the reasoning behind it, so just people in the community can even understand as well.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
So, the purpose of this particular operation that's going on with Beaumont Transit was to use the transit services as some mobile warming stations. And we initially did this program about two years ago. And this is basically a continuation of that, and Community Development reached out because they wanted to make sure that this was in alliance with some CFR regulations for what it is that we were doing. The current operation that we have right now, we've had about.
You may need to have the mic closer.
I'm sorry, can y'all hear me better now? Okay, thank you. My voice is a little, the allergies have been getting to me. But anyway, they've used this system throughout this week, and we've been working and we're doing that, using transit for that, and we've had two riders each day. And we use this facility to take those individuals to the system. We've tried to make the most efficient use of our resources in doing such an operation. And so that's why we've switched to using transit personnel as well as their resources to be able to operate this operation.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was just one of my concerns, because I know last year, we didn't use transit, and I see you made the switch to transit. Can you kind of speak to the difference between what was done two years ago with how we operated this program versus why you chose to make possession, make the decision to switch it?
Yeah, two years ago, whenever we did it, we used public safety personnel to operate those. And at that particular time, it was just a lot to pull on that. We were pulling officers off the street, we were pulling firemen, and to basically drive those. And so the thought process behind that was to use transit personnel in doing that particular deal. They drive the buses on a daily basis, and it just made more sense to use the resources that we had available to us to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Councilman Fellshaw?
Yeah, I believe two years ago, we used, we used volunteers in the fire department, wasn't to drive, I mean?
They may have volunteered their services, but.
We used, here comes the chief, but I thought we used firefighters two years ago.
Excuse me. Yeah, we did. And we're charged with being custodians of public asset, and for a four-day period, I think we had a total of nine riders with police and fire personnel operating after hours on overtime.
Yeah.
So better make use of transit personnel. They've extended their hours, and like Shay said, for the last two days, we've had a total of four total riders.
Two each day.
So it was made from an economic standpoint, also, as well, continue to provide the service for the individuals that needed, the unhoused, and whoever might else want a ride to Salvation Army.
Have anyone, has anyone used the, the buses that get on, get warm, and then get back off, or, you know?
That would, yeah, have to come.
As a warming station?
Yeah, she's saying, she's indicating yes.
Yes, okay. Well, because City Manager, I know we, we spoke the other day, and I know that two years ago, we had the banners on the side that said "Warming Station." And I think if we could use those again to identify those buses and what they're actually being used for, it would help. But I, I contacted one city church just a moment ago, and they don't have the banners. So I thought we left it with the city, but I understand from the director that we, that I didn't leave it with her, but, so somebody has those warming station banners.
We're the best we can to try to locate.
But maybe we can locate them. I thought we left them at the barn or at the transit building, but evidently, we didn't. But I know one city church doesn't have them, so, but I, I think identifying it might help the homeless population to know that I can get on, get warm, then get back off. I don't have to be transported somewheres. Just.
That, that's what happened last year.
Yeah, just to, yeah.
That's, that's the information that's conveyed to the ridership. If they choose to get on there, that they do not have to get off on there, we just run it by there. And speaking specifically to the banners, I tried to, like, steer clear of that. And so what we did was, we created a route to all the known homeless encampment sites in the city, and it, this particular route goes all of there. And those, they, when they stop at each site, they tell them, you know, do you want to get on, do you want to get out the cold, in any instances that we've had. And so it is direct communication and coordination between the directors of both Salvation Army and the Director of Transit to make sure that ridership knows that they can get on, they can get off. We had an instance the first night where there was some miscommuni, internal communication with the Salvation Army. We allowed them to get back on, one wanted to go somewhere else, and so we brought those individuals where they want to go for that particular site, so they have their flexibility and their freedom to get on and get off.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And from a safety standpoint, Chief Ottencheck was in communication with Transit Authority for their cell phones to connect directly to the real-time crime center, safety standpoint, both for the ridership and for their drivers.
Thank you. Any other discussion for item number four? All those in favor? Councilman Turner?
Last question. When, when we do things like this, normally, how does it handle this for us, like budgeting? Like, some, some, some of these things are kind of unpredictable.
Well, it depends. You know, a lot of times, we just absorb it in a particular budget, you know? We don't go out and set up an account or fund. If it's a large-scale event, disaster event, we set up funds or accounts for it. If it's something, it's, this, we'll do the operation, and if it needs some type of special account, we'll set it up, but we typically try to absorb it in the budget.
Yeah, so like the freeze, like, that was kind of labeled as a disaster, so that's something that you can possibly refund it from, but instances like this that's not labeled as a disaster, that's kind of like the city just providing that service.
Yeah, there's no declaration of any sort from the state, the feds, or even the mayor, no formal declaration, so there's no way of getting reimbursed at this point. So it's a service we're providing, we're partnering with the transit system. You know, they're letting us use their buses and drivers, so it's a partnership, and we did it at minimal cost this time. And some people might have volunteered last time, but we did pay policing fire people to work last time.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please? Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Council to consider an ordinance authorizing participation in regulatory proceedings of Entergy Texas, Inc., in 2025. It comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve the ordinance.
Is there a second for approval of five? There is a, there is a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six?
Yes, council consider request for a specific use permit to allow a drinking place in a G C M D two, which is a joint commercial multiple family dwelling two district for property located at 3100 North Major Drive, Building C, Suite Five. And it was approved by P and Z. And staff recommends approval with the following recommendations. One, establishment and property premises shall remain in compliance with the building code.
It's a denial.
Recommended denial.
Oh, I apologize. Denied five oh. Get my attention. But if, if it's approved, the following recommendations apply. The establishment and property premises shall remain in compliance with the building code, fire code, zoning code, offenses and nuisance code, health and sanitation code, and all other applicable codes of the city. Two, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, pre-treatment, and our fall program. Three, shall enroll in a Beaumont Police Department's real-time crime center program and maintain annual subscriptions. Thereafter, our employees security patrols during operating hours.
All right, is there a motion for item number six?
I make a motion to deny the specific use permit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the specific use permit on item number six. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Turner?
Just for people watching and people who's been paying attention, when it comes to bars and neighborhoods, we've kind of proposing to do entertainment districts. Been working with council member guests on that because we put these bars and neighborhoods and the citizens who pay their property taxes is affects them. So we really need to figure out to the city where we want to allow these establishments in our community. So that's something we've tasked staff with. And I just think we need to kind of reiterate it when we have the opportunity that this is something that we can do that'll be beneficial to the community as well as the business owners, where they can both be successful long term.
Councilman Getz?
I concur with Councilmember Turner. We need to try to use our master plan to find entertainment districts where establishments like this can be located without causing an uproar with nearby neighbors from noise. And this, this was, how many people came out protesting this, Ms. Ingham?
Quite a few, quite, from the Fairfield and West Chase Village neighborhoods.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion? All right, with that, all in favor of denying item number six, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion is denied. May we have the reading of item number seven, please?
Okay, I apologize for that last one there. Council consider request for a specific use permit to allow a vehicle storage facility in a G C M D joint commercial multiple family dwelling district for property located at 5525 Cole Street. At a joint public hearing held on December 16, 2024, the planning commission recommended five oh to approve with the following conditions. The applicant shall be in compliance with Articles 12 dot zero six and six dot zero eight of the city's code of ordinances. Two, the applicant shall obtain a C O from building codes. Three, all repossessed items must be located within enclosed area and shall not be stored on any right-of-way. And four, any future construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sewers, sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, pre-treatment, and our fall program.
All right, is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve with conditions.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, this is, is there any discussion? This is going to require a supermajority vote. So is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight?
Council consider a request for an amended specific use permit to allow retail shopping center with restaurants, clothing stores, food shops, beauty salons, and professional offices on the G C M D two, which is a joint commercial multiple family dwelling two district portion of the property for property located at 3100 North Major Drive. Excuse me. At a joint public hearing held on December 16, 2024, the planning commission recommended four one to approve with the following recommendations. Construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire code and requirements. Two, construction plans must be the whole requirement by water utilities, excuse me. For water, sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, pre-treatment, and our fall program. Three, directional lighting shall be installed to reflect away from the residence located off Finish Drive south of the proposed development. Four, the five-foot wide sidewalk shall be constructed on private property along the front property line unless the applicant submits to the planning office's written permission from the Texas Department of Transportation, allowing the sidewalk to be placed within the right-of-way. And five, shall submit an amended plan to the building official reflecting the construction of the third driveway.
All right, is there a motion for item number eight?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second for approval of item number eight. Is there any discussion?
Was that with conditions?
With conditions.
Agreed.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Council to conduct a public hearing to consider an ordinance to declare 328 through 338 Bowie and 486 through 498 Pearl Street, also known as the Gilbert Building, as imminent danger in order to honor to raise the said structure within five days. If the property owner fails to comply within five days, staff is requesting city council authorization to demolish said structure without further notification to the property owner or city council action.
All right, with that, I declare the public hearing open, and we will begin with a staff report. We'll allow public comments.
Good afternoon. I want to provide a timeline of the property permit history up to this point. On March 31, 2024, staff tagged the building for imminent danger as it had numerous property violations deemed dangerous to the public. The city made contact with the property owner to discuss the condition of this structure. On June 6, 2024, the building suffered a catastrophic fire. On June 18, 2024, the city council considered the original case before you to demolish the Gilbert Building due to imminent danger. Council tabled the item for 60 days with conditions to erect a barricade and sign on to a work program. On August 20, 2024, an extension of time was granted by ordinance with condition to complete structural restoration within 150 days. And any extension of time was to be granted by the city council. He is also to submit progress reports and reimburse the city for the cost of the water wall barricades. These conditions are being upheld by the property owner thus far, aside from the 150 days. So 150 days have passed. During that time, the property owner has pulled a demolition permit to demolish the interior of the building and to shore the walls. We have, I'm sorry, to demolish the interior of the building. We have observed progress toward that goal. I'm excited to hear from the property owner and his engineer on the project and any findings to the structural capacity of the building. Thank you guys for your time. If you have any questions regarding permitting, I do have my building officials present.
Does anybody have any questions before, do we have some people signed up for public comments? Is the property owner here planning on speaking?
I don't have anyone signed up to speak.
All right, Mr. Flanagan, you planning on addressing council? Yes, please come up to the podium if you would.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, and thanks for having me.
No, not. Go ahead.
Just one second, please. I brought our current schedule, our amended schedule, and I brought some photographs for you to see.
Is that the same schedule we have here?
I'm not sure what you have. It's been amended a couple of times, Mr. Neal.
Mayor, real quickly, if I could just add to that. At the time we do this, the staff report in your agenda, we were operating off the old timeline, which put, again, the deadline set by council was January 10. And so that's why we're back here today. As of yesterday, we received an updated schedule. So that's probably what's reflected in what's being handed out today.
So I guess, since I'm time constrained, may I start?
Yes, go ahead.
I didn't have a long thing, but there are just a couple of things. I want to thank you for the staff's recommendation for the extension. And I'm asking that you vote for the recommendation. And just by way of background, we purchased this building from the city. It had been vacant for decades. And it's always been my intention to renovate the Gilbert Building. But things downtown have not moved very fast, particularly in the last 20 years or so. But we have worked very hard since its incident to save this architectural treasure, and that's what it is. In one of our previous meetings, the, a little reverb on this thing. The Texas Historical Commission stated that a structure of this type is worthy of saving. And I thank you for working with us so far on this. Structures like this give us a vital link to our history, our founders. And in the case of the Gilbert Building, a vital link to one of our city's most important founders, John Gilbert, who was an oil man, an industrialist, a risk taker, a hard worker. And people like Mr. Gilbert that I think we need to remember and uphold because people like him gave us a reputation as builders, as dreamers, and hard workers of an area that could do difficult things. The Historical Commission went on to say that a structure of this type can sustain damage and was built to withstand interior damage that would not affect the integrity of the envelope structure. I'm very proud of the work that you see before you now. A lot has gone into it. Particularly, I'd like to mention Alliance Engineering that has done outstanding work for us, Honesty Environmental, J T B Demolition Contractors. Despite difficult circumstances, they have worked very timely and diligently with safety as our first priority. And I also want to say, in the middle of a difficult situation, that I want to inspire you and challenge you as commissioners to think more about and deeper about the meaning of our downtown. I know a lot of you do all this already. But it's pretty much an established fact, I don't think any of you would disagree, that any city anywhere in the United States that has a declining downtown also has a declining city. And the converse of that, any city that has a thriving downtown is a thriving city. So you could say it's like, take a thermometer, and it tells us whether we're healthy or not. Cities like Galveston, for instance, well, backing up. The last 50 or 60 years in our city, 80 to 90% of our historical structures have been torn down. Calder, for example, used to be lined with beautiful homes. So for one reason or another, they were torn down. Okay, we're talking about the Gilbert, but I'm also talking about downtown and where we're going. What if Galveston had done this, or New Orleans had done this, or San Antonio had done this, or so many other cities had destroyed their? So what we're doing with this building, why am I mentioning that? This building, amongst others, is a treasure. And we've worked hard, and it's been very expensive for us. So growing up here, I decided to live here. And we all know there's something about southeast Texas that's wonderful, but there's also something that's held us back all these years, this attitude that it can't happen here. It'll never work. You'll never see that here. I never wanted to be part of that. And that's why I spent 40 years of my life, $40 million, building Crockett Street, rebuilding the Stedman Building, saving the Mildred, the San Jacinto 470, 510 Century Tower, and occupying them with hundreds and hundreds and thousands of businesses. So I just hope that we're starting '25. I'm asking for your vote on the staff's recommendation to allow us to save the building, recognizing the work that we've done. And I hope that we can join hands, stop fighting, work together, and make an amazing year in '25. Maybe this is the year that we really turn the corner together. So thank you for allowing me to say that. I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions from council? Councilman Felschau?
Mr. Flanagan, thank you for coming today. I appreciate your time. I, since the fire and looking at the pictures, I'm assuming you've made significant investment. You've already started in the restoration of the building thus far.
Yes, sir.
You've made a, I'm not asking you for numbers. That's your private business. But you feel like you've made a significant investment in trying to move forward with this project?
Yes, sir. And I can just indicate that right now, we've spent close to $500,000. And when we get it to the decision to structurally enhance it, it'll be in excess of $800,000 total, just to stabilize it.
And so you're demonstrating by that, you're demonstrating your commitment to continue moving forward?
Yes, sir.
And following through with the restoration of this project to completion?
Yes, sir. And I think it's obvious.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Getz?
I would agree that you have done significant work to stabilize the building. However, if I'm not mistaken, it's still being declared as being in imminent danger to the public. Is that correct?
The plan before you with the project schedule looks like it's being restored to its original pre-fire structural capacity. So pre-fire, it was tagged for imminent danger. So it will need to come into the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code.
So my question to you, Mr. Flanagan, is, is it your intent to try to restore the building to the way it existed before the fire and stop there for an extended period of time? Or do you plan to go further and actually restore the building so that it has a viability as a commercial building?
Yes.
What kind of timetable would we be looking at for that?
Well, we actually, as soon as we finish this, we're going to do the neighboring building next to it, the McFadden Building, and then we're going to start on the old First National Bank. As you may remember, we call that our Bowie Street Project. We have three buildings that we want to restore in that whole street. I can't give you a timeline on that. A lot of it depends on economic conditions. It depends on policies of the city. It depends on cooperation. It depends on all these things. But we bought these buildings to restore- on cooperation, it depends on all these things, but we bought these buildings to restore, and that's our intention.
I understand, and of course, it's been your intention to do that for a number of years. You've had a number of these buildings for a number of years. You have restored some, many have sat vacant.
We have 14. We have four that are vacant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's 41 vacant downtown.
My question, though, is, with the Gilbert Building, you're saying that you can't give us a timeline as to when you will begin reconstruction on that to restore it so that it can be commercially viable?
Well, the, the schedule, if you'll look at it, in February, we have to make the decision to do the structural improvements to further stabilize it. Once that's done, then we'll set our sights on a plan for renovation, but it's a six to eight million dollar project beyond, beyond what we're spending now.
So are you asking us to give you until February the 10th, and at that time, your plan is to come back and tell us you're going to go forward? I mean, it's hard for me to imagine that you've spent half a million dollars without a plan to go forward, and are you asking that you come back on February the 10th and you're going to tell us, yes, I've determined that we're going to go forward and make this building not only commercially viable, but give us a timeline?
Yes.
The date would be February 18th. That would be the next?
February 18?
That was, that kind of formula and these milestones were kind of, have been since the original plan was put forward to you.
Okay.
It's nothing new.
Councilman Neal, do you have a question?
I do, Mayor. I'm trying to find out what we're actually voting on here. If you go back to the, on August the 20th, we voted on an ordinance, ordinance that gave until January the 10th. On January the 7th, which is today, we're voting on something that gives them until February the 10th to be complete with, the exterior walls, roof, and elevated floors shall be restored to their original structural capacity as identified by structural engineer. And then it goes on a little farther to say he's coming back on February the 18th to give us an update on, I guess at that point, whether or not it's a go or no-go.
Not to interrupt Councilman Neal, but if going by the new timeline that was provided, again, the ordinance and the memo was drafted, we did February 10th to complete, February 18th for him to appear before council, but if the new timeline requires that he won't be able to make a decision until February 28th, then council should consider pushing that back to March 11th, which is the first meeting in March, but I'm just putting out dates.
But equally important to that is the staff report is recommending approval. The ordinance that we have in our packet is recommending denial, so I can't figure out who's recommending what.
This, this ordinance, or this request is the same agenda item that came to you guys in August of 2024. On those conditions that y'all affirmed, he's, it was 150-day work program, and then should he need an extension of time, he had to request from now. So this is the same agenda item, however, he is asking for that extension of time because of, and I'll let him explain the reasoning because, but that, that is why it's placed before you. And so because we, staff has observed him making progress to the, to the demolition permit and as it relates to the, the scope of the project, we're recommending additional time. Now, the 30 days was prior to me receiving the updated project schedule, so I did not see, I believe it's February 26 on there, or the 28th, where he would choose whether he's going to proceed or not. That I had to, due to internal deadlines to meet, I had to post this agenda, and I did 30 days. Now, it seems he may need a little bit more time for reasons that he can explain, but that, that's why this is before you. Does that make sense?
So the ordinance that's in your packet will be amended to now reflect, it's an ordinance to amend the ordinance that you adopted on, back in August, so that would be ordinance 24-043.
So the ordinance needs to be changed and the staff report's not accurate?
The ordinance will be based on the recommendation of council. So if council said that they wanted to demol, to demolish the building, which is what the public hearing is for, then the, the ordinance is correct. If council says they want to give an extension of time with the recommendations and outlined in the staff report, then council will make that recommendation and the ordinance will be amended to reflect that. So if council, there's two motions before council or potentially that can be made by council. One would be to demolish the building, the second one would be to allow for an extension of time, insert date, and then we can back up what those dates look like to amend the ordinance that was adopted in August.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Getz?
Look, I'm not interested in demolishing the building if you're interested in going forward with refurbishing the building and making it commercially viable, but right now it doesn't even have a roof on it, does it?
No.
And this language that we are looking at in here says that the exterior walls, roof, and elevated floors shall be restored to their original structural capacity no later than February 10th, 2025. That can't be met. That can't be done. What are you looking at as a realistic timeline to accomplish that?
So this schedule shows us completing a demolition and demobilized by the 27th of January. We've already begun the engineering for, if you look below line 21 on your schedule, we've already started this work, even though it's not supposed to start till line 22. We have a pretty good idea of what needs to happen structurally for the building, and we're designing a roof right now. I would say that by the 28th of February, we'll be able to present that plan to you as the schedule calls for.
That's, that's for the design, Tom. What are we looking at in terms of actually doing what, what we said?
Mike, if you look at lines 31 down to 36, project?
Construction. Finalize contract, mobilize the site, perform reinforcement scope, clean up, and demobilize. It looks to me like you're saying the project will be complete by April 23rd, 2025.
That's right. That's about, that's pretty much March, April from the decision point to work, and we're working on it now.
And so what we're looking at seeing, based on what you're telling me right now, is that on April 23rd, 2025, we're going to see a building that is structurally sound, and it's going to have a roof on it. It's the exterior walls, the roof, and elevated floors will be restored to their original structural capacity. That's, and a structural engineer will certify to that.
Yes, and, look, it goes without saying, council members, that why would we go through half a million dollars plus of expense if we had, if we were just playing around here? Wouldn't have done that. No insurance on it. It's all out of pocket. It's not easy. We're trying to save the building, and we think it's worth it in the, in the long run, and we hope we can all work together and make a fantastic downtown someday.
So you're hoping to have it structurally sound and with the roof on it by that April 23rd date?
Yes, that's the current schedule.
Can I add something, Mayor?
Yeah, Councilman Neal, then Councilman Felschall.
Okay, so I personally don't think that you can put all those subfloors back in there and put a roof on that building in four weeks.
We're not putting all the subfloors back in, Taylor.
I'm telling you what this, what the document that we have says.
Uh, show me that. We're gonna, is that my document?
No, it's the, it's the conditions proposed by staff.
The original ordinance requires that the exterior walls, roof, and elevated floors shall be restored to their original structural capacity.
We're going to put steel, steel girder beams on the 60, 60-foot wide dimension on each floor, and then put the roof over the top of that.
But, Mr. Flanagan, with all due respect, even that portion is going to take you more than four weeks. Council doesn't mind. My recommendation would be if this thing gets tabled for two weeks and for you and city staff to get on the same page and bring us a legit schedule that makes sense.
Councilmember Neal, that's more than four weeks. He's going to April 23rd.
But just four weeks for perform reinforcement scope?
Mayor, do you have another question, Councilman Felschall?
Well, my, my question is the same. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a builder, but I was just wondering, can you do this work and ask, as mentioned here, in four months to that point of the roof being on top and so forth? And I, it just seems to me that that's, that's a daunting task to get that large of a roof on a building in four months, but...
So, so if you, if you would, council members?
I'm going off, I'm going off the construction on, down at the bottom of getting into that scope of under, line 31 construction, but can you even do that in four months?
And my engineer would have been here, but he had a conflict, important meeting with another client. We're doing everything we can to work with the city staff and the council. Number one, I hope you noticed something when you look at the pictures, our number one goal is safety. I heard a number of you say that, Councilman Durio said that in one of our last meetings. If you look at the amount of temporary shoring up that we've done through this to protect the building, to protect workers, we have had so far no injuries of any kind, no incidents of any kind, noticed no movement in the walls. So we're trying to accomplish, we're driving toward what the city wants as fast as we possibly can. Obviously, I'm not an expert because I've never had to do a demolition like this before, but I have restored a lot of buildings in bad shape before. I don't think I answered your question, though.
Councilman Durio, I think, had a question.
Yes, I had a couple of questions. Is the building, I mean, according to this deal here, it says, y'all was asking us to get it razed because it was imminent danger. Is it an imminent danger right now, today?
Yes.
Yeah? And based on, have we sent our folks out there to look at that?
Yes, sir. Floyd Meyer, building official, he can come down. He's been walking the site and working with Mr. Flanagan to ensure that the project moves forward.
Just for our, people in the audience, in the view?
We don't think it's an imminent danger.
Hold on, Mr. Flanagan, we got to go by what our people think. Given this many extensions, is this something that we normally do for other citizens that come before council?
I think this is a unique situation in the fact that the building was severely fired, damaged by fire, and the property owner has requested an extension. Typically, we have situations where the building is just completely destroyed by the fire and then city demolishes and puts a lien on the property. So there's not a lot of incidences where we've had to deal with this. I would say that this is pretty unique. The last known property was the hotel that was partially burned, but the owner was still using, was still occupied, and the city had to intervene and evacuate the, the residences. And eventually the fire burnt, the building burned again, and it was...
But I just wanted to know, I want other citizens to know that we do have folks that come up here periodically and get extensions. This is not, I don't want people to think that we're showing any type of favoritism. I want, then, can you answer that question? Because I know we've been up here, like, when we're getting ready to quarterly, when y'all bring buildings to demolish.
Yes, sir. If they demonstrate normally that they have the capability to move forward with a project or that they're going, give some kind of intent or, or effort to intent, then y'all normally do grant a, an extension of time.
Okay, and Mr. Flanagan, has he shown this?
He's showing progress as it relates to the building permit that he pulled.
Well, can I hear from?
Sure.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Manager Williams. I'm, I've made periodic inspections during this process. Every time I've gone there, more progress is being made. Earlier this week, I went in there, went to the third floor, went up on the scaffolding, and as they got towards the top, things have slowed down. The work is harder, more extensive, more structural components have had to be installed, but they have been moving forward and progress is being made. As far as this schedule, where it says issue reinforcement plan package to the city building official, I talked to the engineer earlier this week, and he is needing a little bit more to be done before he can make his full assessment of the, the area of the roof. I just got to the third floor, could not get to the fourth floor up to the roof, there's still demo needing to be made. There's a little bit of demo that's done, then the scaffolding crew comes in, a little bit more demo is done, scaffolding crew comes in. So this has slowed down, but if you, anybody can look and see the structural components that have, it's not just regular scaffolding. The bottom part is just a spider web of scaffolding. When you get up towards the top where they have to have the structural aluminum I-beams and then put the wood decking down to where they can actually step on, on that and get weight, which is the demoed products, everything that they have to tear down and get it off the, it's a lot more complicated than what you would normally see. And so this has slowed down, and that's why there's an adjustment being made. Anybody that's been in construction and understand, sometimes there's a lot of unknowns until you get into it knee-deep, and then you realize that, well, we're going to need a little bit more time because to keep it safe and to, to make progress on this, sometimes you have to get into it before you can find out. And so far, as a city of Beaumont, as a building official for the city of Beaumont, this project is still moving forward. It has slowed down, but I'm seeing progress. I'm waiting from the engineer. He said he's going to get that as soon as they get the rest of the items demoed out where he can do his full analysis of the north, south, east, and west walls. Right now, he can, I believe, get to, two of the walls, probably almost 100%, and the one of them, he hasn't been able to get to at all, and then maybe 75, 80% of the other wall as far as that corner closest to the, the west wall and then part of the, the west side of the south, and also, I believe, on the northwest corner of the north wall, he still cannot give a report on. So he's waiting to do it all-inclusive for me to where we can see a shoring package, reinforcement package, and, and what else additional is going to be made before they can come back with a plan to build back the building, whether it be the roof, the floors, the lateral supports, north, south, east, west directions. So anyways, that's pretty much what I've got up to this point.
So, and the, what you just said about the plan, is that we grant this extension when, in 30 days, he's going to come back with the plan?
With the reinforcement plan. Not the complete build back. He's going to need to get to that point before he can give us more information on a complete build back, but on a reinforcement plan to stabilize the entire building.
And at that point, it will no longer be an imminent danger?
At that point, after they do the reinforcement plan, it should not be an imminent danger after that.
Okay, one last question. Is this a realistic timeline, in your opinion?
For the reinforcement plan, yes.
But not for this, not for?
Not anything further than that, no. Not this time, there's too many, still too many unknowns, in my opinion.
Councilman Getz?
And then Councilman Turner? You know, it took five years to rebuild Notre Dame. This is not Notre Dame, but I recognize that it is going to take a period of time for you to get it completely finished. I want to applaud you for the work that you've done so far. I, for one council member, am prepared to give you the time necessary to get to this point in April where you can have it restored, the structural integrity, and from what I'm hearing from you is, at that point, if everything goes according to what Mr. Flanagan is suggesting at April, on April 23rd, it will no longer be in imminent danger. Is that what you're telling me?
It's according to what they're giving me on their schedule.
All right.
Councilman Turner?
I, I, I do understand Councilman Neal's point because, you know, the original report says imminent danger, but it also is a recommendation for extending time. But then on the flip side, I understand what you said, Councilman Durio, when we get the dangerous structures and we still do extending time, but I think it's important to kind of speak to that because I think citizens who watch and see this, they're very confused, it kind of conflicts. So I think, you know, I'd rather staff take the time to actually really explain this. Me personally, I, I'm with Mike. I do not support using the tax dollars to...
Me personally, I, I'm with Mike. I do not support using the tax dollars to knock that building down. I think that's something, if that owner owns it, it should be done in the private sector. But if that's something that you can speak to, because I think it's a lot of confusion with the way the verbiage is, either Boyd, whoever decides to speak to that.
So imminent danger is a term of art. It's required in order for council to take action. You just can't tear down a building because you want to. There has to be some structural components that make it an imminent danger. So the answer, it's a two-part question or situation. Is the building in its current state a danger? The answer is yes. Is the building owner or property owner willing to make upgrades and changes to the property so that it's no longer an imminent danger? And by Mr. Flanagan's statement, he has put several dollars into the project in order to get it up to a point towards no longer imminent danger. Because of the size and the, the amount of damage to the property, it's gonna take some time to get it to that place. So council is now charged with the situation to make a decision as to, A, whether or not Mr. Flanagan's efforts are sufficient to council standards, and the timeline that he's presented is sufficient to council standards in order for you to allow him to continue doing the work? Or do you say, you know what, we don't think that you're ever going to be able to get it to a place where it's no longer an imminent danger? We don't see you making sufficient progress to get it there. And so we don't want you to spend any more money on this project and we think the building should be demolished. Those are the two components. But yes, the building in its current condition represents an imminent danger to which it can, if council show chooses to be torn down. But we just can't tear down buildings because it looks bad, right? So there are buildings that are in poor condition that do not represent an imminent danger. And then there are buildings who are, look completely fine, but are structurally unsound and represent an imminent danger. So that is a term of art that is used. And if you want to get more technical as to the components of that, I'm sure our building, building official can give you that. But that, those are just, those are just legal terms.
I understand that, but my concern was, Ms. Demme said prior to this, it was an imminent danger prior to the fire. So that, that was what I was.
Was tagged for imminent danger. I have Silas, our demolition coordinator. Silas, can you give a couple of reasons why it was tagged for those reasons?
You'll have to give me just a second to pull it up. The, the original structure was tagged in March of last year, which was before I was here. As I, as I recall, there were a lot of structural concerns and quite a lot of debris, but the, but the demo coordinator at the time had a lot of concerns about the, about the structure being, being a threat. And the fire obviously changed, changed that quite a bit.
While he pulls it up, I'll go ahead and give you some, some background on the building. Prior to the fire, the building, the city was paying for barricades to be around the city, be around the structure because it had, parts of the building were collapsing, glass was falling from the building. So that was part of the, the reason for the building being tagged because it was essentially crumbling, whatever the, I don't know what the facade is, but that and glass were falling from the building. So that was, it was barricaded and the sidewalk around the building was closed prior to the fire. So that was one of the issues. And there were, I guess, upon inspection, once we initiated the downtown plan upon inspection, there were other structural issues that were determined prior to the fire. Again, regardless of when it happened, the question now is, now that the property owner, Mr. Flanagan, has said, hey, I'm, I'm willing to put money into the building, I'm willing to, to do these things and get it, get it up to speed towards no longer an imminent danger, the question before council is, are you willing to give an additional extension of time to make those things happen?
Understood. Yeah, well, let's hear from our demolition. We'll give you another option.
Sure. As an example of some of the things that were mentioned in the original letter, means of egress, electrical equipment, electrical facilities, exterior roof and drainage, required fire protection, component service under safe conditions. Obviously, a lot of that burned away, but the, the structural issues themselves have, have only gotten worse.
Okay. Councilman Samuel, have you had a comment, a question?
Yes. The situation as it is now, the problem we're all having is confidence and trust. We've been cordial throughout the years. I've, this is a part of my war three. I've had faith that you were moving in the right direction. Now we are at a crucial point that a decision has to be made. It's not in anybody's interest to see it demolished. That's not the best interest. However, we have to make sure the structure is structurally sound and safe. And that's what I have to make my decision on. I can't see you putting the money into the building and not moving forward with completion. That's, doesn't make sense to me. What I'm concerned about is, one, getting to the point that it's structurally sound and it's not a danger to the public. What I've been listening for is what happens at that point. Will this building be the focus of your attention until it's brought into a position that it can be a commercial structure?
Yes, sir.
That's the first thing. You have a great investment in downtown. There are other buildings that, there are things to be done. I'm not like some saying, I don't think it can be done. That's not my decision. But my question is, once this is done, will this be set aside for a time period? Or are you going to completion with this before moving forward?
It's getting 100% of our attention. As you know, we own about 18 buildings downtown and all of which need attention, you know. I hope you, council members know, the easiest thing for me to do is probably what most people would have done, cut and run, let the city demolish. You know, not only have I been accused by some of burning my own building down, but also I'm stepping up and trying to save it. And not to save it, but save the three buildings on Bowie Street and, and to make what you might argue is the ugliest street in Beaumont, make it one of the most beautiful. I like a turnaround and I see that. And I hope someday we join together to do that. But what you see me do, I've heard reference to Notre Dame. I'm Catholic and I didn't agree with it. The Catholic Church couldn't even afford it, the richest church in the world. They turned it over to the government of France. The government's doing that. I haven't asked you guys for a penny. I'm just asking for your support and guidance. And I'm learning a lot from your staff. They're teaching me things, too. I'm learning a lot from the engineers and the contractors doing this. It's, what we're doing is hard and expensive and the most difficult path that I could take.
Okay.
I hope you all understand that. And it's difficult, and it's difficult to stand here, stand with people I respect and work with and undergo an inquisition. But that's your job and that's fine.
I understand.
But it's not easy.
I understand. Now, I had not finished yet, but, so please allow me. I put my confidence in our staff. That's what I have to do. But as you stand, I've watched you over the years. You've never lied to me. You've always told me what you wanted to do. That's where I stand. The worst thing that we experience, oh, well, the worst thing I have to experience, and I've had to do this before, is to watch a person put their investment into something, get to a point that it can't be done, and then we have to tear it down. That's not what I like.
I don't think it's gonna be necessary.
And I believe that. So, and that's why my faith is in what staff says. And what I will look to is to make sure there's been reasonable progress toward that end. That's what I look for. Right now, I stand with the extension of time.
Thank you.
But at that point, it's on you to show that you're dedicated to the project. And that's all.
Thank you. I'd, I'd be happy to walk anybody through it, in hats and safety shoes.
Councilman Durio, you had another statement?
Yeah. Boy, just so, I think we're on the same page.
If you could come back to the podium, Bart, so that we catch you.
If, if given a 30-day extension, at the end of the 30 days, it will no longer be a threat or a danger.
I'm going by the dates that's on here. You're saying 30 days?
No.
Boy, that's what we voting on, giving a 30-day extension. Yeah.
So I do want to clarify real quick. Whenever I wrote this, that was on December 17th. I received this schedule after that time. So going off of the schedule revision C, I think that it was February 6th was the decision, or the completion date on that. So that's the reason I did a 30-day extension. And revision C is the project schedule. It should be an exhibit in your packet. We received this post, posting that agenda item. And so I think it's fair that y'all are looking at the, at, at his proposed schedule and making a decision according to that. And that's, the proposed schedule is in front of you and it's titled at the top, revision D.
Revision D?
Revision D is the latest.
Yeah. And that's the one that says Wednesday, 4/23/25?
Yes, sir.
That's gotta be on, at 4/23/25 date, the, the last line on this page, that's when it's gonna be safe. So not till April.
We, in order to, to officially say that, no, I'll let you, I, I think that it would be fair that at the completion of this, that my staff is able to make a proper inspection and determine that. It, it, we couldn't, we couldn't determine that today because we don't know what it's going to be in a couple of months. Aside from what he's put on here, I would like for them to lay eyes on it.
I will be looking for documents submitted to me as a building official on February the 28th from the engineer on that reinforcement package. And that reinforcement package is going to show me what they're going to do in order to stabilize, after the demolition is done, to stabilize all four walls of that structure. And then after that, on the, in April, as far as once they clean up and they demobilize, as far as the build back after that, this is, this is to reinforce and stabilize that structure. And then there's gonna be a build back package with a set of engineered and architectural drawings after that.
So basically.
It's in phases.
Okay. So if we do a 30-day extension, at the end of 30 days, you're gonna be back asking for another extension?
Yes.
We, we would need to be looking at, at the first council meeting after the February 28th meeting, to get a report and an update at that point. Because we know in 30 days, we're not gonna have that answer.
And I heard the demolition guy, he mentioned one thing that caught my mind, caught my attention. Some of the, when it was already up for demolition before the fire, he said it did not have the required fire protection?
Correct.
May I address that?
Come, come on. You don't mind?
So, so I couldn't give you any specific details about that particular violation without doing some, some further research?
I just want to know, was it in, in the building or not, fire protection?
I don't know without doing, doing further research.
He wasn't here and didn't do that.
I'm, I'm only going off what was reported at the time.
I can speak to that.
May I have the opportunity to address your question?
As soon as they get finished, yeah.
Yeah. This, so when the building was tagged, there was no electricity to it, no gas to it or anything. And that building originally did have a standpipe system. It was not a sprinklered building. But to answer your question, the original, as to, the, the fire protection that building had when it was originally built, what was there was not in operation at that time. The, the fire protection, that's what you're looking for is that the original fire protection was not operable. It was still what was, and components were in the building, but there was no power on the building, there was no water to the building, and there was nothing that was operable.
So if no water to the building and the fire protection wasn't gonna work anyway?
Correct.
And if they had fire protection to the building and they ran water to the building, we might not even be here discussing this today, chief.
Yeah, I can't answer that.
That's why I said, ask chief. I, just, just, just for clarity, if, if they have fire protection, that building had water to it, would, would, would that have prevented that fire?
Yeah, that would have been our protocol to hook into the standpipe system and pump into it, in order to try to save the building and prevent our personnel from having to go and risk themselves. We always want fire alarm system, standpipe system, sprinkler system functioning if possible.
And, and that's a responsibility of?
That is the responsibility of the owner.
All right.
To, to maintain any fire protection or any protection systems, which we would conduct regular inspections. But in this case, it was tagged as substandard structure and was in pretty poor shape at the time.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, boy.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yeah, I'd like to address that because there's been a lot of misinformation about that. When we bought the building from the city, it had no electricity, had no services, had no water, had no fire protection system. Okay? And the term imminent domain, or imminent danger, I'm learning, doesn't necessarily mean imminent danger. It's a legal term. The things that it was cited for were repeated vandalization, broken windows. At that time, we had a homeless invasion and a vandal invasion of downtown. Those were the things. The structure was maintained strong and the downstairs was secure. But it did have broken windows, it did have graffiti, and it did have some bugs in it. But if, as you make a judgment about this, we bought it in the same condition from the city, who didn't want to spend a dime on it. And we took it off the city's hands to try to make something out of it and we haven't given up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Any other questions to him? Because we may have some public comments. I'm not sure if anybody signed up. So at this point, what's before us is they're not gonna be receiving any update until February 28th. So it would be after that date for there to be a report to council. So just for clarity, we would need to extend to that date. Yes, Councilman Velshaw?
Just one quick question, question. City manager, we put up the barricades, I know. There was some expense from the city. Did Mr. Flanagan reimburse the city for that work done?
I think that he did.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That was a condition of the previous ordinance. In order for it to, for him to enter the work program, he had to reimburse the city.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we were hitting those benchmarks and that we have been reimbursed for everything that we were.
He's complied with all conditions of the previous, the previous ordinance.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. I don't know that there's any other questions. Did you have any more comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you working with us.
Before you, before this, you call for the reading of, of the item. I do want to point out to you, when council decides to make a motion, the recommendation was for 30 days. Council should consider, based on the revision D, maybe extending that so that the extension will take him to that February 28 deadline to complete the work and then to the, the first meeting in March to come back and report to council.
Real quick, the February 28th?
Yes.
Yeah, just to, to add on to what the city attorney was saying, maybe for the sake of clarification, I think if you were to amend the stated recommendations in the, in the report with the following changes, that item, condition number one, change the date of February 10th to April 23rd, 2025. And that would, that would line up with his proposed work schedule, again, to complete the roof, walls, floors. And then amending condition number two, changing the February 18th, 2025 date to March. And then amending condition number two, changing the February 18th, 2025 date to March 11th, 2025. And as the city attorney mentioned, that would be the first meeting in March. Note that we're not going to meet on the 4th because of Golden Triangle Days, but that would be the first council meeting in March after that decision date of March, or excuse me, February 28th. And then you could just amend the second line of condition number two to change the word "completion" to "progress."
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Chris, how many days is that? Instead of 30 days, are we proposing?
I didn't specify. I just deleted 30 and just went with the conditions.
Okay, so then we would amend the ordinance to, instead of saying an extension to 30 days, we'll just say an extension to comply with conditions.
You don't think it needs to have some type of a, a deadline date on there?
Well, it has a report date to us where they'll make another recommendation.
So, again, if council, if council was to do that, instead of, in the recommendation that senior staff report, instead of it being February 10th, it'll be February 23rd. And instead of reporting at the February 18th meeting, he reported the February, I'm sorry, at the March 11th meeting. And instead of reporting on completion, he would be reporting on progress.
April.
I'm sorry, April 23rd and March 11th are the dates.
And Mr. Boone?
That, that's, just going to clarify the April.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion?
I have another question.
We need, right? Okay. Councilman Neal?
Okay, so by the end of April 23rd, you're still going to have a building that has no windows or doors or any of that. So, we still have a building that's in violation of the Downtown Code?
It will still be tagged for property maintenance. And to that end, I think that's important, why you guys have been asking the question of what's next? What's to come after the structural restoration? Because obviously, that has to come first in order to make any, uh, any progress to restoring the entire building or renovating the entire building.
Okay, thank you. That answered your question. Councilman Neal?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yep, may I?
City manager.
I think we might have to close the public hearing.
Can you officially close the public hearing?
Yes, we'll close the public hearing at this-
Didn't we have to see if anybody else wanted to speak?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes. So, the public hearing is closed, and if we could have, since the agenda item has changed, Councilman Getz, you've been making notes over there?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve an extension to April 23rd, 2025, at which time the exterior walls, roof, and elevated floors shall be restored to their original structural capacity as identified by a structural engineer registered in the state of Texas. The property owner shall obtain all applicable permits. Additionally, uh, that we approve an extension so that the property owner shall appear before the city council at the March 11th, 2025 meeting to report on the progress of the project and disclose intent, plans, and timeline to make all necessary repairs to bring the building into full compliance with the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code.
I'm sorry, Council, what meeting in March did you say?
July.
So, that is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion, Councilman Neal, okay?
All right, so just for clarity, we're saying easy to have a roof and all the subfloors in this building by April the 23rd, 2025.
Well, right now, we're saying we're going to get a report made March 11th, but it is pointing to that date. And I, I understand your concern.
All right. Is, as a, as someone in construction, Councilman, is that even realistic? Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Okay. All right, if there's no other, uh-
Oh, Councilman Neal, saying in your opinion, that's not realistic, what would your suggestion be?
I think that it's a realistic date to have the engineer report to us on the date that he says he can have it. I think that's realistic. However, to perform reinforcement scope from March the 24th until April the 18th, which would include putting all the subfloors in there and a roof on that building, is not possible.
So, at that time, when they come back with that report, we may have to do another extension?
That's why my recommendation was to table this and let staff and Mr. Flanagan come back and bring us a realistic schedule. I think we're just, all we're doing is setting ourselves up for this to come back to us again.
So, to that point, your original ordinance require, uh, does require you to give, do some type of action today. So, if council wants to not stick with that, that particular timeline that was presented and give another timeline with different conditions, you can. But if that ordinance elapsed without an extension given, then the effect of it is councils authorize us to tear down the building?
Well, at this point, what I've heard is we're really not going to get any additional report than what we've received right now until that February 28th, which would, well, yeah, but March 11th reporting date to us. So, at this point, tabling it two weeks wouldn't really give us any additional information other than what we have here.
There's nothing that says he can't still turn in this reinforcement plan by February the 28th for his schedule.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, I, he could, he could certainly still do that. I'm just saying, in terms of them providing us additional information, in terms of, it, it sounds like we're going to get our next report from, yes, Mr. Boone?
If I could just add to that, that, again, they would be due back March 11th, perhaps their engineer, we could ask if their engineer be present. And that wouldn't preclude us from meeting with them in the meantime to work out a schedule. And again, if it looks like the April is not realistic, again, we could revisit that at the March 11 meeting. But we, I guess what I'm saying is we could do both.
Is there a proposed amendment to the, to the motion that you would like added to the ordinance?
Well, I mean, you can't even really put a real construction schedule on it until you have the engineered report done because you don't even know what you're going to physically be doing to, to build it back. I mean, at this point, I, I think it would almost be better to, to say, we'll give them till the 28th to turn in the engineering report, and then we'll meet again. But I mean, this is, the schedule portion of it's not worth the paper it's written on when it comes to the construction side of it.
So, so it could say where staff recommends approval and extension. Are you, Councilman Neal's, uh, or Councilman Getz's motion was extension to February, I'm sorry, April 23rd, to allow the property owner to comply with additional conditions? Are you asking for an amendment for just April 23rd, for him to provide an updated construction timeline?
I mean, we could pass April 23rd. I'm just telling you, he's not going to meet that date.
Right. And, and Councilman Neal, I'm not in construction. I, I, what I see is the most important date is getting the engineer's report, getting a report back to us on the March 11th meeting to see how the, how it's proceeding. And at that point, we could, uh, but we would, this would be given until April 23rd. That is correct. All right, if there's no other discussion, everybody clear on the motion? All right, all those in favor of approving, uh, motion number nine, that's been made by Councilman Getz and seconded by Councilman Samuel. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And that, we'll do a show of hands. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now, if we go to item number 10?
Uh, another public hearing.
No, we have another public hearing?
Yeah. Council to conduct a public hearing to consider finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that a public health nuisance exists on the property, property located at 5150 Laurel Avenue with the legal description of Maplewood 2L19B7.
Mr. Coleman?
Good evening, councils, city manager, and staff.
The public meeting is open.
I bring before you the property at 5150 Laurel. Ms. Bruce, if you go to the next slide, here's just the history, how long we've been dealing with this property. As you can see, it started off in March of 2013. And, next slide, please. And it was referred to public health in December of 2024. So, uh, the city has been dealing with this property, as you can see, for an extended period of time. And of course, it's, uh, you can go to the next slide. We can see with the litter that's accumulated on the property poses a risk for, uh, rodent harbingerage, as well as mosquito breeding, breeding. Mosquito breeding, mosquitoes, you know, carry the West Nile virus, and rodent droppings, uh, carry the hanta virus. So, it's definitely a public health hazard. And so, we just bring the property before you.
Is there anybody that signed up to speak? Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Felschall?
This is the property the gentleman came forward earlier-
Yes, sir.
-to the elderly gentleman that's requesting more time.
Yes, sir.
This is the property, yeah.
Has it made any attempt at cleaning this stuff since you've been dealing with it? Or it's just getting worse and worse?
No, not, not to our knowledge, he hadn't made any progress on it.
Councilman Felschall?
You may not be able to answer this, but do you know if this gentleman has family, local, that can assist him with this project? Or is this a, an elderly man that is by himself and has no?
I'm unsure regarding the family. I do know since 2013, there's been 11 cases filed in municipal court. One junk motor vehicle, seven litter, and three weeds. Some have come in back into compliance, some have gone to municipal court, and some have assessed fines. So, it, there is a bit of a, a history with this property.
Councilman Getz?
So, if we go forward and declare it a public nuisance today, that doesn't mean tomorrow we're going to go out there and start cleaning it up. There will be a time period in which he can still move forward to abate this. And if he does so, what happens? We can drop, how does that work?
To remind council, the process, it goes, it started with, um, with our code enforcement and, and in the municipal court process, and as you've heard, it has several cases there. It's now moved to public health. Once public health has it, public health, if, if it's declared a public nuisance, goes through the process of sending out a formal notice and a formal letter, and then working with the property owner to get the property cleaned. I think in the past, we've even had success, but to Councilman Felschall's point, people coming to offer to volunteer to clean up the property. And so, we do try to find the most, um, amicable solution to that. And so, if, if, if progress is made, or if someone comes for a family or a social or civic group and offers to clean up the property, then we, uh, through the Health Department can allow whatever extensions, um, at the Health Director's discretion. If nothing is done, um, we use this, this declaration to file a civil suit to get the property cleaned up, um, at the expense of the property owner. That obviously goes through the court systems and takes some time, which is why typically the Health Director and his staff has tried to find amicable ways to work with the property owner or local groups in order to get the property cleaned.
Councilman Neal, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm assuming you're getting quite a few phone calls from the neighbors.
Yes, we do. And if you declare it today, then what happens is we reach out back to the property owner, and they have 10 days to either clean the property or make significant progress. Then after that, if no progress has been made, then we refer it up to legal. Then it goes through that process.
Councilman Felschall?
City manager, I, just again to bring clarity, if we, if we decide to do this and clean this up, what happens then with this man's property? What follows, what, what happens after that?
Probably more of a legal question. We're, I don't know if we bill him and file a lien on it and he retains ownership?
Just to kind of walk you through the, the lawsuit process. Um, we, we go out for bid on the process before filing a lawsuit to get an estimate of how much it's going to cost to clean the property. Um, we obviously, um, average out the bid to, to the court, like, hey, we did go out for bid. This is the, the, the average cost that we believe it's going to take to clean up the property. Once the, the property is, the, the judge in some cases will allow the person to have an opportunity to clean it. Typically, our orders say within 30 days because that's how long it takes for a judgment to become final. So, the property owner can have up to 30 days to, to clean up the property. When the judgment is final, we go out and we clean up the property, and then we file it up with a lien. The order from the judge typically says that the city has reimbursed up into that, that maximum amount that we said it would take. So, if we say this property is going to take $6,800 to clean, and we get a bill back for $7,000, we eat the cost of the extra two, and we put a lien on the property for the $6,800.
But he's not evicted?
No.
He stays in the home?
Until he gets ready to sell.
So, there is an argument that could be made that we actually are helping this elderly man by cleaning this up? I mean, there is a viewpoint there. You're not going to answer that. I understand. But, uh, there's a lien put against the property, so, but-
So, when the property is sold?
Then that lien has to be settled or satisfied, but he is not evicted from the home.
No.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Coleman. All right, there, nobody here to speak on that? It's the pub, public hearing is closed. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 10?
Council to consider finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that public health nuisances exist on the property at 5150 Laurel Avenue with the legal description of Maplewood 2L19B7. It comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number 10?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval for item number 10. Is there any, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the work session regarding the review and to discuss fiscal year 2025 budget and budget process?
Thank you, Mayor. Council to review and discuss the fiscal year 2025 budget and budget process. We got, uh, Mr. Duncan Brown, our, um, Assistant CFO. Mr. June Ellis, our ACM, and, and Ms. Bridgette Evic is going to give us a presentation on the budget. And as they're getting plugged in, I'll kind of lead in with this deal. In a prior meeting, we had Councilmember Turner ask for a workshop, a discussion on the budget and financial activities of the city. And so, what we're doing today is bringing you together a discussion, uh, information on the budget of the city here. Yes, a few things, you know, basically, we went through a budget process. We identify what we're doing. And the goal of this administration during their budget is to provide a financially sound financial plan for the city of Beaumont, which we've done. And we've got a lot of those, uh, goals and priorities from the strategic plan, which was approved by the city council, and from the budget, which the priorities were established by the city council. You know, uh, what we want to be, we want to be physically conservative. We want to have low taxes, you know? We, we have not raised taxes in a while in Beaumont. You know, we were the beneficiaries of the state property tax relief plan. That, that helped us substantially. But the city did do some things too, to, to, uh, make that better on our taxpayers. As a, as an organization, we wanted to do more with cost recovery. The city's been offering a lot of services that we haven't been recovering the cost on and have been paying the cost, uh, for some people who have benefited from that and other taxpayers who- other taxpayers who are paying the cost for some things they shouldn't, so we've been out there recovering those costs. We want to talk about proper fund balances, basically reserves, which are very important to any city. It helps with our bond ratings, and it helps us establish that sovereignty we need as a city. As far as myself, this is probably the twenty-fifth budget I've put together in my career, gotten budget award, asked for award, and beauty, and also the budget presentation award, which Beaumont has yet to get. And that's our goal, is for Beaumont to be able to recognize and get those type of presentations, you know, type of awards. This is my second year, this administration's second budget. First one was twenty-four, this one's twenty-five. Any other budgets before that were not done by this group, my administration. So this is just the second one. Prior to that, twenty-year prior administration put those budgets together, which, you know, it's like getting two attorneys in the room, you get two attorneys in the room, you get two opinions, they're different. So, just like, well, we had two financial officers, you get two opinions, and they're going to be different, but you work toward the same goals, and that's what we do, working toward the same goals with that. But what we did bring, we did bring transparency to the process, to the city of beauty, we brought transparency to this council, we brought inclusiveness where the city council participated in that budget process, as I've been told, that was not done before. We did that with workshops, we did it with defined goals, we did it with letting you establish priorities and having approvals, for sure. So it's been an inclusive process where this council could participate. And as I turn it over to Mr. Ellis, I do want to briefly mention the process of zero-based budgeting, which we did last year, which is something this city has not done. And it's basically providing a process where you justify every expenditure, you know, where before, in our budgeting process here in Beaumont, people were given, the department was given the same amount of money the previous year, so if you had a million dollar budget, you were given a million dollars and say, okay, spend a million dollars, what else do you need? With zero-based budget, and you get zero, but you got to come up and justify every program, every process, and every expenditure, which saves money for a city. So we're not only looking at new revenues, we were looking at where we could save and cut expenses, and we did that with several departments. So we're going to give you a comprehensive report, you can ask questions as you see fit, and we look forward to this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, council, and thank you, Mayor, for this presentation. As the city manager mentioned, this item was requested by a council member at the last meeting, and seconded, and we put together this short presentation, which may not be short, but we want it to be thorough, we want to provide you the information that we feel that you requested. This presentation will include myself, Mr. Duncan Brown, the assistant CFO, and Ms. Bridget Evic, the deputy controller, and throughout the process, again, if you have questions, feel free to ask any questions. But I'm going to start with the overview of this presentation, and what you can expect throughout this time, while, as we present this PowerPoint presentation. So we'll start out by discussing the interim finance department structure. As you all know, Ms. Ray is no longer the permanent CFO, that position is vacant, and we are in the process of looking to fill that position permanently, but in the meantime, there is a structure that's in place to carry out the duties of the finance department. Number two, we will cover some common budget terms that I know you've heard before, and throughout the last couple of years, and probably throughout your term as city council members, I'll cover some common budget terms. The budget process and city councils involvement, I'll talk about that process as well, which is what the city manager just covered with you. I'll go a little bit into more detail on that process. We'll talk about fund balances, in particular, the general fund balance. We'll talk about the water and water utilities fund balance, we'll cover the solid waste fund balance. We'll talk about budget transfers and changes between funds with regard to transferring dollars from one fund to another. We'll touch on property tax revenues here at the city, and sales tax revenues. We'll discuss city bond rating, which is really important for any city. We'll talk about water and wastewater rates, and how that impact the fund balance, and how it really impact the city's bond rating. And then we'll close by summarizing today's presentation. So, this is, this is not, there we go. So in terms of the interim finance department organizational structure, in the interim, until we do fill that position permanently, we will function as it shows there on the screen. I, as assistant city manager, I will perform the administrative function of the finance department. I will provide oversight of the department, I will be responsible for approvals, in particular, personnel-related approvals of finance. Mr. Duncan Brown, Jr., Assistant Chief Financial Officer, will serve in an operations capacity. He will oversee operations along with Bridget Evic. But Mr. Brown will primarily, in the interim, be responsible for the budget and general operations of finance. Ms. Bridget Evic, Deputy Controller, will also serve in a dual capacity with Mr. Brown as over operations. She will be responsible for audit and accounting. There are a lot of other functions of finance, but these are the primary functions of finance. Of course, we cut invoices weekly, we handle payroll, those will fall under Mr. Brown and Ms. Evic. In terms of the fund balance or definitions, this is where I will go over some of the definitions that you will hear throughout this presentation today. As I mentioned earlier, I'm sure city council has heard these definitions, especially when we've had budget work sessions. So I'll start with fund balance. And what is the definition of fund balance? The difference between governmental fund assets and liabilities. Fund balance policy, that's a minimum fund balance that is required to be kept in reserve as defined in the financial policies. Fund balances over the policy requirement may be appropriated in the budget. You will hear generally accepted accounting principles, what we call in governmental finance as GAAP. Uniform Minimum Standards and Guidelines Used for Financial Accounting and Reporting as Set For by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. We call that GASP. Deficit, excess, the excess of expenditures over revenues during an accounting period. Balanced budget represents total proposed expenditures not exceeding total anticipated revenues and available reserves above the policy requirement. Bond rating, a credit rating to provide investors in municipal bonds a way to assess creditworthiness of a state or local government issuing the bond. And zero-based budgeting, which is a budgeting method where all expenses in the budget start from a zero base, and every program, service, or function within an organization is analyzed for its needs and costs. And I will touch on zero-based budgeting, as the city manager did as well. This is, this year was the first year that we implemented this budget method, and it's a method that's used throughout the development of the budget. For example, right now, we're not using zero-based budget, but over the course of months that we went through when we prepared the budget, April, May, June, and July, during that timeframe, we implemented this budget method, where, when departments submitted their budget, or before they submitted their budget, we zeroed out every expenditure in every single department. And they had to justify why they need every dollar in their budget. So we started from zero, we started from scratch, whereas in the past, departments would basically start from their budget from the prior year. But we felt that this was a really good way of, city's budget here is a large budget, general fund, one hundred and sixty-seven million dollars. So we wanted to look at every single dollar in every department's budget, and they did just what we asked. They justified every dollar to let us know their need to operate and provide services to the citizens of Beaumont. There were many instances where some departments let us know that they didn't need as much, that it didn't budget it in the past, or, and there were some, a couple of instances where we had to provide them more funding for the current fiscal year. But it was a really good way to surgically go through each account, and we went through every single account, from travel and training, chemicals, dues and miscellaneous, even we looked at all of our personnel-related expenses. This is something that proved beneficial to us, and we plan to do it again, because it created efficiencies and helped us to realize some savings in some departments.
To whom are the department heads making their budget requests to? Is it you? Is it Mr. Williams? Is it our former CFO? Who is the one that says, okay, tell me what you need? And then, do they have the expertise to say, no, you really don't need that, or, yeah, you do? I mean, how does that work?
So at the beginning of the budget process, we have a budget instruction manual, that we call it, we call it actually a budget preparation manual, which details out how a department should submit their budget request to the finance department. They submit their request to finance initially, but ultimately, the budget request goes to the city manager. City manager is the one who proposes a budget to city council, so ultimately, it's the city manager's proposed budget. But initially, it goes to finance. They organize all of the documents, look at the numbers, prepare for the two-week-plus-long meetings that we have in the city manager's conference room. So to answer your question, it's prepared for the city manager. We have an instruction manual which walk departments through how they should submit a budget request, and then we sit down with them. Actually, in a lot of cases, the department head may sit down with the division head before that budget is submitted to finance. So we give them about a month to submit their budget request to the finance department. And then finance may have questions before it even gets to the city manager to clean up some things that are not in compliance with the budget instruction manual. And then by the time we meet with the city manager, those typically are really long meetings, they could last an hour, two hours, with a, with just one department. That's why it takes two weeks, if not more than two weeks, to walk through, and we walk through every line item. We put it on the screen in the city manager's conference room, and we go through every line item, which is what departments do initially, anyway, or they should do initially, and what we had them do, because we zeroed everything out. What do you need? And they provided that information, along with their department head, or division head, or assistant city manager in some cases, where I met with some of my departments on their budget request. So that's all before we have the really long, all-day meetings with the city manager. Answered your question, thank you. So in terms of council's involvement in the budget process, council's involvement is an integral part of the budget process, because we want to seek guidance from city council, we want city council's key budget items, we want to know those as early as possible, especially city council priorities. As you know, and as you may recall, the city manager, the last two years that I've been here, he would sit there, and he would ask council, what are your priorities? And he would go down the dais to receive from you your priorities for the budget, so that we can consider those as we are preparing the budget annually. We consider those as we consider the funding. Can we fund these items? Typically, we can't fund everything, because departments have a lot of requests, but we do want to hear from city council. So that's why city council is really integral. And we use your feedback to us for what goes in the proposed operating budget, whether that's the general fund, or water utilities, or solid waste fund, as well as the capital budget as well. So we hold three budget work sessions with city council. Most cities do that. We want to be transparent, we want to get council's feedback and let you know what we're working on throughout this long six-month process. The budget is, really takes six months. We start in April and end in September. It's not a one-month-long process, it's really grueling, I've been through many of them. So we hold work sessions with council, and council is well aware of those, some of those take four to five hours long, you know, some we've had to cancel and extend to another day, two years ago, because there's so much information that we want to share with city council. The first budget work session is the CIP, Community Investment Plan. We talk about all of the capital projects during that work session. Then we come back with the second work session to identify key budget items, ask for city council priorities as we're preparing the budget. Then the third budget work session is a presentation of the draft budget. That's the presentation where, as you're aware, each department head comes up here to the podium and presents their proposed budget. That's near the end of the budget process. Then the city manager presents the budget. After any changes are made after that third budget work session, city manager presents the budget to city council. There's a record vote on the proposed budget that's held. We actually have, we have to have, by law, public hearings on the budget, public hearings on the tax rate, and on the capital program. We want to hear from the citizens, so that's why state law requires those public hearings. Then city council annually ratify the property tax rate, and ultimately adopt the budget so that the city can function for the upcoming fiscal year. So that's done in September, new fiscal year begins in October, and that's standard in probably ninety-plus percent of cities in Texas. So this is a review of policy changes on the fund balance. So as we look back at the fund balance over just the past few years, there have been some changes that I want to cover in this presentation. So in fiscal year twenty seventeen, for the general fund, the reserve policy was ten percent. Ten percent, and it's twenty percent now, but it was ten percent in twenty seventeen. And the financial policy stated, the proposed budget expenditure shall not exceed the total anticipated revenues in the city manager's proposed budget. And the fund balance policy stated, the fund balance in the general fund, which exceeds the minimum levels established for that fund, may be appropriated for non-recurring capital projects and programs in twenty seventeen. The following year, in twenty eighteen, staff would have proposed in the budget process a change from a reserve of ten percent to twenty percent. The financial policies stated, the proposed budget, the proposed expenditure shall not exceed total anticipated revenues in the city manager's proposed budget. But it was changed, the policy was changed in that year, and it states, under this policy, it is allowable for total expenditures to exceed revenues in a given year. In twenty twenty-two, the financial policy was still a reserve of twenty percent, but then it was changed in twenty twenty-two to state, the total proposed expenditure shall not exceed the total anticipated revenues and available reserves in the city manager's proposed budget. But the fund balance policy remained the same in that year. In twenty twenty-five, this budget, we improved it for clarity to state, a balanced budget represents total proposed expenditures not exceeding total anticipated revenues and available reserves above the policy requirement in the city's, city manager's budget, proposed budget. The city of Beaumont. The city of Beaumont has not received a GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, Budget Presentation Award in twenty-two years. It was 2003 was the last time the city received that award. That is a program by our national, our finance, and when I say our, I'm speaking of finance, our National Association, which tells us how we should present the information in our budget. And they clearly give us guidelines of what needs to be identified in your budget document so that the citizens can clearly understand the budget. One of the things they state in their requirement is define, clearly define, what is a balanced budget? I mean, that is one of their stipulations and requirement. Again, Beaumont hadn't received that award from that program in twenty-two years, 2003, based on the information that we could find. So we changed the policy because we are continuing to improve this budget document. It's going to take more than one or two years to get it to where we are in compliance with GFOA standards. We're working towards that, and we will continue to do that, but it's not going to take two years if it took twenty-two years where we didn't receive this award through this program. So therefore, we did change it to clearly state, as required by GFOA, that a balanced budget represents basically what was listed above in 2022. Total proposed expenditure shall not exceed total anticipated.
So you already gave us a definition of a balanced budget. Represents total proposed expenditures not exceeding total anticipated revenues and available reserves above the policy requirement, and I understand that. My question is, when these fund balance policies, when the fund balance policy changed from 2017 to 2018, was that something that had to be approved by council? Or was that something internal to staff? There were staff changed the policy?
It requires council approval. Every year, we include, every year, all the cities I've worked for and most cities, we include the policy in our budget document. So it's in the budget document. When we presented the proposed budget document to council, the policies were in there. We had a tab that says financial policies. So when council adopted the budget, you adopted the policy. Basically, you adopted everything in that binder that we provided to you. So it comes from staff because we as staff, for example, members of Government Finance Officers Association, there are best practices. These are updated every year. They may tell us, you know, they may suggest, you know, fund balance reserve should be thirty percent. And then we as staff, we discuss that, and if we feel we can afford it, we bring it to council. We put it in the policy.
In terms of best practices, the fund balance policy as it existed in 2017 versus the way it is now, what is the best practices?
The way it is now.
And why is that?
Because it clearly defines, it clearly defines what a balanced budget is. Total proposed expenditure not exceeding anticipated revenues and available reserves above the policy requirement. That's, I'm sure, I wasn't here then, but that's why they likely changed it from fiscal year 2018 to 2022 to say available reserves in the city manager's proposed budget.
See, when I'm looking at the fund balance policy, you know, that's a different question to me than what is a balanced budget. A fund balance policy is us trying to tell you what we want to have as a policy, is the minimum amount to have in our fund balance. I understand the reserves being increased at twenty percent, but when we're talking about the policy as it was in 2017, we're saying that we wanted the fund balance in the general fund exceeding these minimum levels of ten percent that's established for that fund may not be appropriative for non-recurring capital, or may be appropriative for non-recurring capital projects or programs. It can't be appropriated to balance the budget. See what I'm saying? So I think some of the concern you have heard going forward into this next budget cycle is from some of the council members, myself included, having a deficit budget where we're having to actually go into our fund balance to be able to take care of the expenses. We don't have enough revenue coming in. We're having to go into our fund balance. And that's a big concern for myself, and I know some of the other council members.
Thank you, Councilmember Gads. And I do hear you. But in terms of city's budget and having policies in place, again, that's why GFOA tells us to clearly identify what a balanced budget is. And actually, when I got here two years ago, I did ask the CFO at that time, where in your budget does it state a balanced budget? I asked him that. And the financial policy for 2022 is what he told me, is a balanced budget. So I said, we need to clearly identify, because I can't, nowhere in the document can I identify what makes a balanced budget or what represents a balanced budget. Again, so in order to be in compliance with Government Finance Officers Association best practice and standards, we need to be clear about what a balanced budget is. And this isn't, I mean, this is, to me, clearly a good definition of a balanced budget. And our reserve percentage is a reasonable percentage for a city of our size. So nothing, nothing strikes me as being unreasonable in the financial policy and the definition of a balanced budget. So just a couple of weeks ago, maybe two and a half weeks ago, we reached out to our audit firm. We have an audit firm, outside audit firm, Patillo Brown and Hill LOP, and asked them to look at our financial policies and our budget and tell us whether or not our budget is a balanced budget. This is the quote from our auditor. With respect to a balanced budget, I agree that the budget satisfies the definition in the policy.
Yes, Councilman Philshaw, then Councilman Neil.
First of all, I want to thank the city manager and staff for bringing this to us. This is very informative, and it helps a lot because government financing can be convoluted. And so thank you for doing this. I also appreciate, city manager, the fact that, under your administration, you have brought us into the budget process, and we never did that before. So thank you. And I like the ideal of a zero-based budgeting to where every department has to justify their expenditures. Of course, I've made it clear that my concern is, however we want to define it, but my concern has been that our expenditures exceed our revenue. In order to balance that, we have to pull it out of the general fund. So here's my question. Right now, the last report I saw, we're at thirty-seven million, I believe. The twenty percent requirement of the one hundred and sixty-seven is around thirty-three million. So looking at the firefighter's contract, and we don't know what that's going to do to impact our budget, if and when that number drops from thirty-seven below thirty-three, what does, what has to happen at that point? And how does that affect our bond rating?
Well, just to comment about the thirty-seven, I haven't seen that number. It may be some, where is that number coming from? Because.
So the report I have on my desk, I just looked at it a moment ago.
We're getting out of the monthly financials.
Yeah, the monthly.
And we do have Ms. Bridget Evick that's going to talk about the monthly financials and how those numbers are represented compared to the budget. So that's more in her lane. But our budget and our fund balance is going to probably be on the very next slide where I show our budgeted fund balance, which is forty-six million dollars, ending is forty-three million, which is on a cash basis, and she'll get into that. But that's the number that we use from a budget standpoint. There are certain accounting guidelines and principles that are used in order to represent the fund balance that you see in the monthly financial statements. They're not incorrect, but it's just how those numbers have to be presented in our monthly financial report versus how they're presented in the budget. But in terms of the budgeted fund balance, and again, it's going to be on the very next slide, and actually, since I'm done with this slide, it's a couple of slides over. Well, it's also on this slide as well. This shows our fiscal year budgeted. Again, we're focused on budget expenses for the three funds that, in our financial policy adopted by city council, have our policy requirement. And that's why we include these three funds here, because these are the three that have a policy requirement associated with them. General fund, as you see, twenty percent, and solid waste and water utilities are both fifteen percent. That's the requirement that we have to set aside for emergencies within, that may occur during the fiscal year. So the general fund expenses for twenty-five is one hundred and sixty-seven million dollars. We're required to set aside thirty-three million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in the budget. But we set aside forty-three million, four hundred and seven thousand in the budget. So we are over, again, going back to the requirement, we're over the requirement, and we satisfy the definition that's in the policy for a balanced budget. But we have nine point nine million dollars in what's called unrestricted funds. Those are over the policy that was adopted by city council, saying you must set aside thirty-three million. But we in the budget set aside forty-three billion, which comes to the nine point nine million. So those unrestricted dollars, and in accounting, unrestricted means that you can use those dollars, they're not restricted to a certain use or limitation. Those can be used in any way by the governing body or by the city. So in the general fund, we have nine point nine million dollars in unrestricted funds budgeted. Solid waste fund, we're over budget and have two point eight million dollars in unrestricted funds. Water utilities, nine point three million dollars in unrestricted funds.
Can I ask a question about?
Yes.
Okay, so back to a question Councilman Philshaw was asking. So you got nine point eight million additional funds in the fund balance. We have not secured the contract with the fire union yet. So, I mean, pick a number, I don't care what it was. It is, I mean, say five million dollars. So now you got five million dollars out of that almost ten left. Going into budget season the next year, your expenses are going to increase, which means your twenty percent requirement is going to increase as well, when you already had to pull three point six million dollars out of it for last year. That's the concern we have. So now you had the ten, you take five away, you're going to take another four out of it, so now you're down to one.
And to add on to that, you know, you mentioned that our expenses are going to increase, but our plan is for our revenues to increase as well. So that will offset that one million dollars that you just mentioned, and we don't know what that is, but we do have a plan. Our administration, this administration, has a plan to increase revenues in the general fund for next year, just like we did this year. So that'll offset that amount, sir.
And at this point, I'm going to interrupt. It's four thirty-four. We're going to take a ten-minute recess because we've been at this over three hours. So we will, four forty-five, we'll be back. So we will, 4:45, we'll be back. It's still there, but my grandson was playing with it. And I suppose we, do we need to have a roll call at this point?
Yes.
Mayor West.
President.
Mayor Protim Neil. Councilmember Durio. Councilmember Getz.
President.
Councilmember Turner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
President.
And Councilmember Samu.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Continue?
Yes, please continue.
All right, thank you. I wrapped up on this slide here, I'll move forward. This is the general fund fund balance for the current fiscal year. This is how in most of our city funds, we represent the budget each fiscal year, but this shows the general fund balance. It shows the budgeted $164 million for revenues, budgeted expenses, $167,556. That net or that difference is a negative $3.546 million. So our starting fund balance is $46,954,000. That's the budgeted starting fund balance. Our ending fund balance is $43,407. So if you look at that $43 million, that takes into account that $3,546,000. And then our percent of fund balance, once we consider that, the $43 million, again, takes into consideration, because it's backed out of the $46,954, the negative $3.546. So we're over the fund balance policy requirement of 20%. Again, 20% policy requirement, we're at 25.91 budgeted. That's the adopted budget by city council that was adopted in September. City's policy requirement, restating that again, at 20% is $33,511,000, which puts us over that policy requirement by $9,896,339. So I included these slides here to show the fund balance history. I'm pivoting now to the water fund. I went and looked back at the fund balances in the water utility fund, which is our second biggest fund here at the city behind the general fund. And in the water utility fund, we have a 15% policy, and we've had that policy actually before fiscal year 2020, but I just started that fiscal year 2020. And at 15%, the amount for that budget year would have been 8 million that we would have had to set aside. But in the budget that was adopted by city council, we actually set aside $11.8 million that year. That's 22.2% fund balance. So that's, you know, 7.2% over the required fund balance of 15%. If you look at the second year there, fiscal year 2021, our 15% reserve requirement was $100 million. We actually ended up that year with the budgeted amount of $15.3 million reserve amount, which is at a 28.6% fund balance amount, the second year. Third year, $7.8 million policy requirement is what we needed to set aside in that fund. We set aside $11.9 million, 22.7%. Fourth year, fiscal year 2023, $8.3 million required to be set aside. We set aside $10.8 million, which is a 19.6 fund balance. So I won't touch on 24, but 25, this fiscal year, $9 million requirement at 15%. We're at 30.5%. We doubled our policy in this current fiscal year for the water fund at $18.2 million. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
That's an enterprise fund. Yes, that's primarily where we get interest income from money that's in the bank, but it's primarily water bills, the water and sewer rates that are paid.
And just for clarity, these funds can only be used for water utility fund-related items?
Primarily, but council does have the authority to move funds around at its discretion. So any unrestricted funds in any fund, the city council has that authority to transfer those funds.
But if you have, if you get to the point where you have so much extra money in your water fund that you're using it for other stuff, shouldn't you look at lowering your water rate?
If we have that much more than what we need, we could also look at using these funds for capital projects and doing more capital projects. Every week, it appears that we get calls about sewer backs up, backup and those types of issues citywide. So instead of lowering the rates, we could direct those funds to additional projects of the city. Question?
Councilman Turner?
I know in the past, we have used money from the general fund to shore up things in the water fund. To my understanding, am I correct? Have we ever made transfers like from the general fund to not sure up, but to do projects, water-related projects?
I've only been here the two years and I don't recall that, but again, the city council can transfer money. As I showed on a slide, a couple of, well, a couple of slides ago, there's $22 million in unrestricted funds between the three funds. If council chooses, we could transfer those funds as it sees fit between any fund. So likely, it could have been, it could have happened before throughout the budget over the years, but I'm not aware of it happening within the last two years.
Can I ask another question, Mike?
Sure.
I thought of it as an enterprise fund, the funds have to stay in that enterprise fund, they can't be used for other funds.
We actually transferred, I think it's $10 million to the general fund because the general fund, city manager, HR, we provide services to the enterprise funds, water utility, you know, HR services, city management services. So they can pay back for the.
Like administrative costs.
It's what we.
City council can transfer money across funds. You're the only one, a city manager can't. I can't transfer money across the fund. I can transfer it within a fund, but only city council has authority to transfer money across the fund and use it.
Councilman Phil Shaw?
I'm excited about this jump from 24 to 25 up to 30%, 18 million. Are we, what are we contributing that to? Increase of water rates?
Yeah, this fiscal year, we did increase landfill rates in.
It's water utility.
Oh, yeah, this is water utilities. So, yeah, water rate increases. As you recall.
Yes.
Our water rate consultant, HCR, came and made a presentation to city council. They've done it the last two years and really let us know that we need to shore up our fund balances. Our bond, our bond rating agency even told us that over the past few months when we met with them in June and July, that the city of Beaumont needs to shore up its fund balance. Listen to the bond rating agency and our consultant, and that's partially the reason why we're at 30%.
Yeah, and I remember them telling us, recommending that we raise our rates. I had no idea it was going to have that kind of an impact. And as Councilman Turner, I mean, excuse me, Neil said, at some point, if it keeps climbing, I think it begs the question, do we not lower the rates? It's just, you know, that's a lot of money for, we're, well, that's not a fair question.
Well, and I think too, we need to stay on the information they're giving us. I mean, a lot of that is going to be policy that we will deal with.
That'll be 18.2 at the end of this year. That's not 18.2 now, right?
That's 18.2 in the budget, yeah, at the end of this fiscal year, yes.
Yeah, and also some of this money is used for capital projects and transfers to capital reserve, can be kept for capital reserve and those type of things. So the CIP that you approved, this helps fund part of that CIP, so it's, those dollars go in different directions, and this is how what accumulates.
Any other questions? All right, next slide is, this is a solid waste fund, which shows a history as well for the last five years. Our policy in solid waste is 15%, and it has been since 20. I'm sure we didn't look beyond 20, I'm sure it goes back, you know, farther than fiscal year 2020. But in 2020, we exceeded our fund balance policy. It was 15%, we came in at 15.5 budget, and 2.1, 2.2 million versus where we needed to be at 2.1. The second year, 15%, we budgeted at 15.4% for the fund balance. The third year, which is fiscal year 2022, fund balance policy 15%, we ended up budgeting at 17.9%, $2.2 million in the fund balance. And as you can see in fiscal year 23, 24, we've been in compliance with our policy. But fiscal year 25, again, we double our fund balance requirement in that fund. And I stated earlier that we increased our landfill rates in this new budget. That's partly the reason why there's an increase. There have been savings in that department in the current fiscal year, there are vacancies. So vacancies tend to contribute to a higher fund balance. Again, that's budgeted, you know, we still need to audit that year once this fiscal year is done, but we, in our budget, doubled our fund balance in our general fund from 15%, in, I'm sorry, the solid waste fund, from 15% to 34, more than double, 34.6%. And we were also informed by our solid waste operations manager, Mr. Benji Williams, who, as you know, he's retiring at the end of this month, but he, you know, he's been with that department for 32 years. And he recently informed staff, and we communicated that with staff during some of these budget work sessions. He informed us that in the next three to four years, we're going to have to build a new cell out at the landfill. I forgot the number of millions of dollars that he said it's going to cost, but this fiscal year, when we put the budget together, we considered that fact, that we need to start building those reserves, because in three to four years, we're going to have to spin out a large portion or a lump sum of funds in order to build this third cell that he said that we will need to build in three to four years. So at this point, this phase of my presentation is over. I do have some slides at the tail end of the presentation. I'll open it up to any questions, and then after any questions, I will turn it over to Ms. Bridget Evic. She's our CPA, she's our deputy controller. She's going to talk about financial reports and why you see a $37 million fund balance versus the budgeted fund balance of 46 million. And again, both are accurate, but she's going to explain that from an accounting standpoint. So I'll bring up Ms. Evic.
So to kind of get you up to speed, all of our different financials too, and this is to stay in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, which is what we're supposed to do, and governmental accounting standards. So our annual budget, I mean, our budget process, that's done on a cash basis. Our monthly financials are done on what's called a modified accrual basis, and our annual comprehensive financial report, our ACFIR, is done on full accrual. Now, to go back and kind of tell you a little more about what those are and why we might do that, other than just keeping in accordance with what governmental accounting principles say that we should do. So our annual budget, that's done more on a cash basis. So this is how you might do your personal budget, right? So your whole, your whole mortgage payment would go in there. Well, if we budgeted on full accrual, you would probably only expense your interest part of that. The rest of it's just going to pay down a liability. So our annual budget is done on a cash basis, so it's going to look different than our monthly financials or our annual report, which is done on modified or full accrual. Now, your monthly financials are done on, on, like I said, a modified accrual basis, which means we take steps to be towards the full accrual, but we're not going to be all there. There's going to be things like your, your fire pension, your, your other post-employment benefits, your OPEB, your depreciation, your capitalization of fixed assets. All those things are only done at year end. So you're, you see big differences from modified to full accrual. Um, but with the modified accrual, so what, what you might see is we're adjusting for things like receivables. We'll adjust our, for your general operations. So we might be recognizing uh revenue that we've billed but haven't necessarily received, maybe on the um, and on the budget, you're not as you're, 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 you're speaking more or you're accounting for the actual dollars in, dollars out. Um, with your modified accrual, you're, it's, it's not full accrual, because like I said, some of those adjustments, we can only make once a year. Some of them, we, we only have the information to make once a year. Um, but, but that's, that's kind of the difference between the two, and each of those, even if you start with the same fund balance, just because of the different entries and stuff that go between them. Now, I can reconcile between the three, but they're not going to be the same, and they're all correct, and that's all keeping us in accordance with what governmental accounting standards say that we should be. So, do we have any questions?
Yes. So why do you use the, the final number on your annual financial report for the starting number of your budget?
Well, well, because at that point, we know that that's a number. We, we know that that's a good number. Like I said, your, your revenues and your expenses that you're going to budget are going to be on the cash basis, because you're, you're going to be more worried about the cash that's going in and out other, rather than adjusting these OPEB, um, other post-employment benefits, stuff like that, or depreciation, things that can vary wildly that we, we can't, we can't estimate that at budget, but we also wouldn't because, or we wouldn't, we would do the cash part of that.
And the cash basis is a typical way for uh annual budgets to be?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, it really wouldn't make sense to do it otherwise.
But on your monthly financials with the modified accrual basis, what you're, what I'm gathering from this at least is that that's going to be a moving target. You're, you're just never going to really know what you have, because you're, it's not a cash basis, it's modified accrual, and there's going to be things that you're not taking into account. Is that fair?
Um, so the modified accrual is more so you're, i- it's like we're adjusting your court receivables, right? We're, we're adjusting all that to actual, so it's not really so much a moving target as there are so much as it is, there are certain accounts that we have readily access to reports, that we can make those adjustments in a timely manner. So we do. So it's not really a moving target, it's just more accounts we can shore up, and we can do that. Your budget's just a, I, it's, it's an educated guess, but at the end of the day, it's a guess.
When I say moving target, what I'm talking about is there's going to be some times where you don't have access to those reports, and you can't factor that in.
Uh, I mean, the reports that we do adjust to every month, we, we pretty much always have access.
Okay.
If it's one of those reports that we only adjust annually, then that we wouldn't, you wouldn't probably even see those accounts on the financials. Those would be backed out essentially to get back from your full accrual to your modified cash.
All right.
For a more accurate picture for the time being, uh, until, you know, we get to year end and we can use those annual reports.
Councilman Phil Shaw, you got a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we use the accrual system at my church, my finances. Uh, it's probably as confusing there as it is here for the average person, for the average person. Um, so I understand it a little bit, uh, just because I deal with it, um, on a daily basis, but the thirty-seven million in the fund balance last month snapshot at that moment, is it fair to say that, that that is cash on hand at that moment?
No, that's, no, fund balance is your difference between your total assets and your liability, liability. That's, it may be close to cash, it may not, but the two are not really related.
Okay. Okay.
You can proceed.
If, and if that's, I was, um, and if there are no further questions, I will turn it over to Duncan to address anything else.
Well, and I, I think for clarity, and correct me if I'm wrong here, we do have good anticipations in terms of what our revenues are in expenses in a budget, and we can see if we are getting less revenue or greater expenses as well. The accrual basis, when you get into uh, when you get into the additional write-offs that you have in an accrual basis, that muddies the water, but it's, you do that because that is the accepted method to do it. You don't receive all your money in terms of your sales tax, your hotel occupancy tax. There's times that that's going to be greater, but you, you, so it's not going to average out to one twelfth in terms of expenses or one twelfths in terms of revenue. It's going to be different every month. So when you're doing an annual projection, you're doing that. I mean, from my experience doing budgets, there, there are seasons that are more lean, and there are seasons that are fatter, and, but you're doing your annual budget, and you're looking at your overall expenses to make sure that you're going to be able to meet those expenses. Is that fair?
That, that is fair. And, and, and like, there are big differences. So like, monthly, you might have, so our city policy is we capitalize assets that are, it purchased in excess, excess of ten thousand dollars. Well, during the monthlies, because that's at year end, whenever we capitalize those things, right? Um, so you might see that expensed until we get to year end, go to full accrual, and we have all of our asset information, so we, and that's why it changes so much. But, but to walk from, everything agrees to our accounting system, it's just different methods of getting there. As in, I'm, you know, modified, full accrual, I mean, and we may not make those adjustments till year end, but it all goes back and agrees to the accounting system. It has to, or else it would be wrong.
Well, and let me ask you this question, just for clarity. When we're, when we were speaking about the understanding of the budget, and, and I, I fall in the category that what is in excess of reserves is available to us to spend. I understand when it's, but when it gets framed as a deficit, uh, my experience is, this is the residents' money. So when the mon- residents' money's sitting there, not doing anything other than sitting in the bank for us, we can start, we can start reduce spending at any point if we need to, with, with cuts that would be proposed. But when we have access, excess funds sitting in our reserves, my deal is, I think it's the residents' money for them to receive benefit of it, and I believe that's who is getting benefit of that, of that additional three and a half million. Had we not, that would have been three and a half million dollars less that the citizens would be getting, and we'd just be increasing what is sitting in our reserve, which is well over our uh required minimum. So instead of sitting at nine point nine million, we'd be sitting at thirteen and a half million above the reserves. And for me, just for clarity, that's why I didn't have any problem with it, because I believe in, in terms of future, I think we always have to be able to have sufficient reserves, which is certainly set forth by this council. And, and exceeding those reserves is certainly fine, but I think there comes a point where you can't have too much sitting there, because it is the residents' money. We're collecting their taxes, and we've got lots of services to provide, and I believe it's appropriate for us to use the, the funds in that manner. Uh, and I don't think we're putting our city, from what I'm seeing, is we have well in excess of what we need at this point in terms of where we are in a year, two years, three years. We could certainly have problems. Beaumont's got challenges, but also we've got opportunities, and we can increase our revenues as well as our expenses, you know, at the same time. And, you know, we'll know where we are in twenty-six, but in terms of twenty-five, we also know where we are. And I know that we need to improve, and I, 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 I feel like we are making those improvement and those advancements in terms of what we're seeing with uh, with the improvements that we've been seeing here in the council, with, with the city administration in terms of vacant building, enhanced code enforcement, and the homeless, as well as the real-time crime center. Those are real improvements to improving Beaumont.
Can I, can I add to that, Mayor?
Sure.
And I appreciate what you're saying, and I think everybody up here understands that twenty percent is the minimum that you have to have in.
Any more questions?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. So for my portion of the presentation, we'll be taking a review of the fund balance versus the policy requirement, and these numbers are per the ACFR, so they only go up to uh the year twenty twenty-three. So in view of the past twenty years, the city of Beaumont has never finished a fiscal year below its fund balance requirement. This includes years involving weather events, recessions, and a pandemic. You'll see in two thousand three, the fund balance was, requirement was ten percent, and we were, I believe, at eleven point seven. And then in two thousand eighteen, it increases to twenty percent, and then you'll see that we haven't um crossed that line yet. In review of year-to-year changes in fund balance, so in this chart, what we're looking at is to see when the blue line crosses the zero percent line. And so the city of Beaumont has maintained a stable fund balance over the last twenty years. Um, and so you'll see that we only dipped uh in a negative change in fund balance in two thousand eight, so the Great Recession, and then also um in two thousand twenty-three. And then you'll see that um in twenty twenty-one, since twenty twenty-one, we've had a uh, a deficit in transfers in and transfers out. So essentially, the general fund is transferring more money out than they are taking in. And so that was one thing that changed in twenty twenty-one. In this slide here, we have a review of year-to-year changes in transfers in and out. And so from FY twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, uh, the city averaged five point eight million dollars um in net transfers. And so this means that essentially the city was able to lower their expenses by five point eight million dollars each of those years. And you'll notice twenty-ten through twenty-twenty, they're below the line, essentially noting that we were able to reduce our expenses, because our transfers in exceeded our transfers out. From the year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, uh, the years twenty-one and twenty-two were increases over the net transfers, so we went in the wrong direction by thirteen million over those two years. And so in this slide, we'll kind of show you what we were transferring out um in the past between twenty-ten and twenty twenty-five. And so you'll see that from the year twenty-ten through twenty twenty-five, our transfers increased between the two years by eight point seven million dollars. And so in twenty-ten, we had largely just one transfer to municipal transit, typically around two million dollars. In twenty-twenty-five, the city has budgeted uh ten million point seven in transfers out to transit, capital benefits, and liability. And then also, in review of budgets, we did notice that prior administrations did not budget all the transfer they expected to transfer out in the, in the adopted budget, but the previous CFO did try to correct all the negative balances through the budget process. So um since essentially twenty twenty-two, so uh since twenty twenty-two, we've transferred twenty-one million dollars to employee benefits fund. Um, through the entire period of this table, ten to twenty-five, there was only t- twenty-five million transferred to employee benefits. So of that twenty-five million transferred through the fifteen years, uh, twenty of that was done um since twenty twenty-two. So the expenses in employee benefits fund are going up. Um, the same thing for capital reserve, uh fifty-three percent of the transfers to capital reserve, I think it says that we've transferred fifteen million from twenty-ten to twenty twenty-five. Fifty-three percent of that has come since twenty twenty-two. And the same thing with general liability. I believe it says we've transferred, I think, nine point seven, that says. And so fifty-six percent of that, nine point seven, has happened since twenty twenty-two. So um we are facing a different challenge now with transfers out increasing over our transfers in. And so under this administration, we have taken some uh cost-reducing or cost-recovery measures uh to try to improve the amount of dollars we are transferring out of the general fund. And so uh we had citywide revenue adjustments in the current budget, uh where we were able to generate an additional four point one million dollars in revenue. In general liability, we did switch from being self-insured to being in a risk pool with TML, and we also added coverage for property, flood, and windstorm. This is expected to realize an estimated savings of seven hundred fifty-five thousand annually. And then also municipal transit, we recently applied for the CNG alternative fuel tax credits for years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four. And the estimated credit for municipal transit was four hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred eighteen dollars. And then for employee benefits, in FY twenty twenty-five, the city switched from Express Scrips to Levinity, which will allow us essentially to get prescription drugs from, I believe, Canada and New Zealand at a cheaper price, expected to save the city a million dollars. And then we've also added a city wellness program. It costs the city, uh, I believe forty-nine thousand, is what we have budgeted for that. And the hope with the wellness program is to hopefully engage our uh employees to be more active and healthy, and hopefully reduce our claims by having those new activities. And so in this, we're going to talk about how property values have increased from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-five. And so you'll see that our values for the city of Beaumont have increased fifty-six point nine percent. It's actually four billion dollars, and we have a compound annualized growth rate of four point six percent during those years. And then same for sales tax. You'll see in this table, we have a diagram of the growth in our sales tax year over year.
Ask me a question?
Yes, sir.
If you back up one slide. So wouldn't you, I, I know we've uh, the growth has been four point six percent year over year. W- wouldn't you think that that's going to slow way down though, because they had a big catch-up thing?
Point four percent, and you'll see that we've only had dips in sales tax receipts during the pandemic, and then also in twenty twenty-three, but before twenty twenty-three, we increased by twenty-two percent over twenty-one and twenty-two. So you can only increase so much before you have to go back down. But we did bounce back in twenty twenty-four with uh another increase. In this last chart here, we will have a comparison of the city of Beaumont, and this is based on calendar year from the Comptroller website. And so what this is doing is saying in twenty twenty-three, the city of Beaumont, in twenty twenty-four, the city of Beaumont increased their sales tax by three point five percent from twenty-twenty-three, and in twenty twenty-four, their sales tax increased by one point eight million over twenty twenty-three. And also, it shows how we compare to our surrounding cities. Beaumont is six point zero nine percentage points higher uh than the other area cities around us. Are there any questions about?
I think those last three slides are, are an indication of us and how we project future revenues and how we look at future growth and budgeting. So the picture for Beaumont is not as dire economically.
Contract could be six and a half, seven million, we don't know. Uh, as a council, what number do we work off of? Do we, do we, do we, how do we a- address that issue?
For our department, six, that's over uh, what, five years, four years?
Fair enough.
Yeah.
It's, uh, fair enough.
And even that's a wild guess, uh, because we've accounted for that, but it's nowhere near five billion.
You've, you've accounted for that in the budget?
Yeah. Well, when we started planning for the budget, we had that in mind.
Okay, so, but even, again, back to the question though, whether we take that, that money and, and it's, it's over four years, what, what number do we work off of? And looking at the impact on our budget, is it the forty-three million, is it thirty-seven million? What, what number do we work off of?
Um, I would go with the budgeted number. So typically, the budgeted number, it should be taken from the, the ACFR when you get updated information. So this year, when we worked on the budget, we adjusted our fund balances to tie to what was reported by the uh independent audit. And so the budget is just a guesstimate. Uh, typically, the fund balance in the budget, if you look, what they estimated, they'll carry it over to the next year as the adopted budget. But if you look at the financial report, what they estimated, and what we actually spent, they're totally different. So why would you carry that number over to the next budget book? And so my preference would be to wait until you have an audited financial report and to use that number. But the number that you start with is typically just a guess on where you expect to end the current year. So in twenty-six, we'll be making a guess based on what we expect to turn twenty-five. But when twenty-five is actually over with, we feel that we need to adjust that number between what we estimated to what the auditor said we actually finished a year. So I would go with the ACFR honestly, and then the budget book will be next. But the monthly,
Yeah.
the, the monthly financial The the monthly financials, as Bridget stated, there are modifications needed for that number. It's not really um the finishing number, I would say.
Yeah, yeah, and I would use the, as Duncan initially said, use the budget number for the forty six million, well, the forty three billion, that's what I would use. Um, um, annually, we have an audit. And the auditors, once they complete the audit, they will be using, uh, they will give us the new ending fund balance number, which is what we use in the in the budget. So that's the more appropriate number to use.
Audited number.
The budget. Budget number, use the budget number.
All right, Councilman.
Yes, someone had a question.
Councilman.
I had to wait for the last slide.
So in this slide, real quick, we're just trying to demonstrate that um between the years of twenty oh three and twenty twenty three, typically revenues and expenses, you see they're growing uh together, essentially normal norm. So our revenues are going up and our expenses are growing up. And this chart on the right, uh what we're demonstrating is essentially when revenues go down, we also decrease expenses. And so you'll see both colors below the line. That means that when the revenues went down, we decreased our expenses. And then if you see both lines above the line, that means our revenues went up and we also increased our expenses. The only years where we um had a decrease in revenue and an increase in expenses would be, uh, I believe it was twenty twenty and then also twenty twenty three. So of the twenty years, there's only been a couple of years where our revenues have went down and expenses uh increased. That'll be in my portion of the presentation.
Thank you.
Back again, um, um, I'll I'll cover bond ratings and the importance of bond ratings, and I have a few slides on on that. But with regard to bond ratings, I mean, that all ties into the city's finances, the city's audit, the the uh fund balances. Um, it it's, and the city has a bond rating. Every time we issue debt, we, a city typically has one of the bond rating agencies rating bonds, uh which says a lot. Uh, it's important because uh the rating provides information to investors as to the quality and stability of our bonds. Uh, it demonstrates confidence of the rating agencies themselves and the city's ability to manage its finances. When they do provide a rating to the city, uh, they are basing that rating on future expectations and 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 the future financial outlook of the city. They're not looking at the past, they're looking forward uh when they provide a a rating to the city. And it also allows the city to ensure that our tax dollars go farther by borrowing funds at the lowest possible interest rate. So it's just like anyone going out to borrow money to purchase a vehicle. They run a credit check on you and if you have good credit, normally your your interest rate is going to be lower than someone with poor credit. Uh, same with the city. If if our bond rating is poor or really low, when we go out and issue debt for water projects, sewer projects, city facilities, streets and drainage, with the poor bond rating or low bond rating, our interest rate is going to be higher. And who's going to be responsible for paying back that higher interest on what we borrow? It's going to be the citizens of Beaumont, uh because we're going to have to increase our property tax rate. If it's general obligation debt, if it's water and wastewater debt, we're going to have to increase our water and wastewater fees annually. So we, as a city, need to and we want to have as high of a bond rating as as we possibly can. And and that's the importance of of bond ratings. So uh the city, we utilize two of the nation's major bond rating agencies, or two of the three. We utilize Moody's, uh we utilize Standard and Poor's, uh and the third is Fitch, but we don't utilize Fitch to rate our bonds. So this past June, so we have two ratings. One is for utility debt. That's the water and sewer related debt. And then the other is general obligation, which is money we have to borrow for facilities or street repairs or parks. So this past June, Moody's provided a rating analysis and they rated, they maintained the city's current rating, which is A one, which is a high gr- high grade credit rating. Um, and so the following month, they came back and conducted a rating of the city's bonds and finances and they maintained the city's A A three with a stable outlook. Which is, and and I'm going to read a quote from our uh city's financial advisor. You, he's been here before and y'all met him, Mr. Dusty Trailer, and he works for R B C Capital Market. He's been advising the city since twenty twelve. And so I asked him a, just a couple of weeks ago, to uh just give me his opinion on our bond rating for geo debt, because that's the one he and I were talking or referring to at the time. And this is his quote. He said the city's ratings are in the capital A, lower, uppercase lowercase a slash uppercase A A category, which signifies a very high quality debt instrument and very low credit risk as credit as credit strength in their written rating. They also indicated an upward and sustained trend in available fund national customers. Uh, and they discussed the recent actions to improve revenue. So this was one of the things that that really stood out to me because they were impressed by the fact that we started conducting water and sewer rate studies. We just started conducting those uh with the new administration within the last two years. They highlighted that a- as something that was significant a- and something that could continue to have a positive impact on our fat from us. They they want to see our rate study, so they um they commented and we provided them that information and they commented that um um, you know, failure to implement rate increases could lead to a downgrade in the future. So uh with regard to um water and wastewater rates, our utility fund required fund balance, as I mentioned previously, is fifteen percent. And the council may re- recall Mr. Reed, Grady Reed with H D R informing the council that our rate is below industry standard, which is twenty five percent. And that we need to try to boost it up to twenty five percent. And this is the first year, as you saw on the previous slide, it's at thirty point five percent. So we finally got to the twenty five percent and and above in the current fiscal year's budget. Mr. Reed with H D R also mentioned that uh we need to continue to cover our expenses and we will continue to do that because we will have him conduct these rate studies annually uh during the budget process. Moody's uh rating, they they said one of the challenges for Beaumont is financial metrics lag behind similarly similarly related peers. And they were more referring to the average household income within the area, not just Beaumont, but within this southeastern uh Texas area. And uh they also uh mentioned or included in their report that future, a future upgrade could increase if there is a trend of surplus operations. So as we continue to improve our finances, create surpluses and healthy fund balances, uh in the future, we could have increases in our bond rate. So some future revenue generation proposals. So we are, as finance professionals, as as at administration, we should continue to look for ways to generate additional revenue uh to the city to help lower the cost uh to the taxpayers and the rate pairs. And we'll be bringing to the city council and, you know, there have been presentations to the council on these top two items, water and wastewater impact fees. We plan to uh for the first time include those in our fiscal year twenty twenty six budget to help with uh the water and sewer fund, uh help offset some of the cost. Uh, implementation of parkland development fees and parkland in lieu of fees. Our goal is to have that in the upcoming budget twenty twenty six, some estimate of revenues for parkland related fees and continuing those fees moving forward. Annual citywide uh review of city, annual review of citywide revenues through the budget process. We should always look at trying to improve our cost recovery. That's what we do with the wastewater rates. That's what we did in the current fiscal year. We had every single department look at all of their fees, look at um um their revenue amounts and they reported back. So we made some adjustments this year and we will have an annual review of citywide revenues uh in this new budget to generate uh new revenue to the city in the general fund, in the water and wastewater fund. We plan to hire a grants coordinator. That was added to the budget in the current fiscal year. Uh, that money is budgeted for April first, so we plan to hire a grants coordinator to increase our focus on grants, to help offset costs uh uh out of the city's general fund, water fund and other city funds. Generation of TURS revenue, this is, this is our first year of implementing the tax increment reinvestment zone. We should start receiving funds after property taxes are paid at by the end of this month. This will be the first year of thirty years that we're, that we will generate money from the implementation of our TURS zone. So those are additional dollars that could, in the future, that could grow value uh downtown and throughout the city. But that's a, that's a way that, that's something we've already done and put in place to to help generate revenue. Because we shouldn't always focus on cut, cut, cut. How can we generate uh additional revenue to the city's uh coffers? And implementation of zero base budgeting during the upcoming budget process. And as as I've mentioned before, this zero base budgeting process has really, really worked of the three funds with a policy requirement. The city has twenty two million, twenty thousand five hundred and eighty nine dollars in unrestricted funds. Again, I I've covered this on a previous slide. Those dollars can be transferred and used as the governing body chooses to transfer those funds. But those are unrestricted funds that's not restricted to a certain program or or department. The city will continue to improve, again, because this is going to take many years for us to improve the budget process, to continue to improve our finances. And and that's what w- we're determined to do is is to adopt policies aimed at maintaining what we call and what General Finance Officers Association call a structurally balanced budget. And and we're going to continue to move towards that where recurring revenues, and again, recurring revenues are those revenues you receive every year. Property tax, sales tax, fees, where those revenues are equal to recurring expenditures in our adopted budget. We're going to, again, continue to move in that direction. And and we're going to improve policies and put practices in into place to ensure that uh our budget and our city's finances are sustainable for the long term, not just for one year. We do a one year budget and as was presented today and mentioned by the city manager. Yeah, we're thinking long term. We 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 look at our property tax growth and sales tax growth and use that to help determine how to budget for the next year, but we also consider the long term. Because we as finance professionals, you know, as members of Government Finance Officers Association, we we have a predatory responsibility to ensure that uh we help the communities that we work for to have uh budgets that are fiscally responsible. I'm a member of Government Finance Officers Association, the city is, uh, the staff in finance, the staff up on the third floor, we're all committed to the city of Beaumont, to maintaining city managers, to maintaining a healthy budget uh for now and well into the future. We're open to any questions or comments.
Councilman Gess and Councilman Turner.
You mentioned that there was an award that the city had never received, um, maybe it was the Government Finance Officers Association Award or something like that. Is is that the one?
G F O A Budget Presentation Award, yes.
Budget Presentation Award. Is that an award a city has to apply for in order to be eligible to receive it? Or is it something that is just given by the, that organization to all cities if they meet certain standards?
Yeah, the city has to apply for it. There's an application process and many different criteria that that a budget document has to meet in order to receive it.
So do you know if we ever applied for it and didn't receive it, or is it just that we never applied for it?
Well, based on the information we found in our research, the last year that the city received it was two thousand and three. That was the last year that the city received that budget presentation award.
But between two thousand and three and now, did we ever apply for it, or do we not?
Well, when I started here two years ago, I did ask the CFO at that time um if the city applied for that award and he said, under the previous city manager, uh, he didn't want the city to apply for that award.
He did not?
He did not. That's what I was told.
Was there a reason?
I don't know. I I was just, that was a statement that was made. I mean, it's not something you have to apply for, but it, but but most cities do uh i- in order to have a document that uh helps uh the public clearly understand your budget for the for the year. But I was told uh that uh the previous city manager did not want the city to continue applying for the budget presentation award. We do receive, and it's been presented to council, the annual audit award.
Right.
We, actually, we just received that probably within the past two weeks uh for our last audit. So we've been receiving that probably for twenty plus years here, but the budget presentation award stopped in two thousand and three.
Do you see any deficiencies that would preclude the city of Beaumont as we currently exist from being able to receive the budget presentation award if we apply for it?
I do see some deficiencies.
And what are those?
Throughout the the budget document. One I commented on today, just just.
The definition of balanced budget.
I mean, there are, honestly, there are numerous things that we have to do with our budget document. Again, it doesn't impact the budget numbers. I'm not talking about the numbers, it's the presentation of the information within the budget document. There are certain benchmarks and standards that have to be met before the award is received by the city.
Well, I would agree that if the average citizen were to try to look at our budget online, um, they would be a little mystified and confused as to what they were looking at. Um, so is it a goal of this administration to try to uh apply for that award and uh make it so that we can obtain it?
A- absolutely, yes. Yes, if that is the goal. For, well, we can't, for the twenty five budget, it's got to be for the next budget fiscal year twenty twenty six. We wanted to this year, but with a new CFO, with a new budgeting system and everything that was taking place with regard to our system, because we had some issues with our budgeting system, we we decided that uh we'll just push it off to the next year.
Councilman Turner.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I requested to do the presentation and Councilman Neil, thank you for the second because of just citizens calling me, asking me, do we have issues as far as our budget in the city of Beaumont? So just a few questions I want to ask that I kind of documented per the presentation about solution driven and not just identifying the problems. Uh, one thing that we discussed was the fund balance from twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four last year. Uh, can, just for clarity, can somebody from staff let me know what was the fund balance from twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four? The, I know we required to have twenty percent, but what do we actually have?
For the budget year twenty four?
Yes, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. The numbers that I have is, it was roughly five point one million over the uh required fund balance. I just want to see if we can clarify that, make sure this is accurate, that I I documented by listening and looking at the charts.
But I'm looking at, I know going into that budget year, we anticipated five point one million. Uh, I think the actual, for the end of twenty three, we haven't been audited for twenty four yet.
Okay, so it was, it was budgeted as five point one million. And some were concerned because they're saying, okay, it's a depleting fund balance. So if last year was five point one million and now it's projected nine point eight six nine nine million eight hundred ninety six thousand, is that a a depletion or is that an increase?
That's a growth.
Okay.
The the modesty of surplus grew by approximately four million, almost five million dollars.
Yeah, because I just wanted to let, actually answer that because that's a question I had. Another issue we had within the city of Beaumont when I first. Another issue we had within the city of Beaumont, when I first got on council, I've been working on this for almost three years, uh, ways to increase revenue. And one thing that I did bring to the council was the TURs, the tax reinvestment zone. And I think it's important that we talk about additional ways to get revenue versus always talking about the issues that we have. The TURs, the tax uh reinvestment zone, we did the beautification fee that could have came out of money that we had budgeted, but citizens are making the choice to actually donate on their water bill to take care of beautification of Beaumont. Another thing I talked about was impact fees. Uh, I've been visited with multiple cities and they, they couldn't believe that when developers come in and do big developments and it impacts our infrastructure, we don't actually charge them any impact fees. So that's something I'm glad we just actually did a presentation on. And another thing I've been very consistent on is a grants coordinator. There's too much free revenue out there that we aren't competitively going after. And again, I think when we talk about deficits and things that are issues in this community, we talk about solutions just as much as we're identifying the problems. Uh, after the fund balance, another thing that I've kind of identified is how do we handle overtime and all factors? And this isn't a today question. This is something I kind of want staff to research and bring back to the council if I can get some support to bring it back. How do we handle overtime and all factors that can impact overtime? How do we audit like our public safety, our solid waste, our water departments, facility and maintenance, parks and wrecks? Those are kind of our five, five, six expenditures. How are we kind of monitoring that overtime? Because if, if a certain amount is budgeted and we over what's budgeted, there's some revenue that we can actually be missing out on if we're not really, really monitoring and being on top of it over time and making sure we stay within budget. So what I would like to see is a financial forecast of, which is important that we kind of talked about this today because it's been a big topic at hands in the city of Beaumont. And I, I, I agree with this and I'm okay with transparency because it's important we talk about these things out in the open. So thank you.
All right, any other comments on that? Moving into closing comments.
I'm willing to give a Councilman Turner a second on that and I have one question. When we decide to, I guess in the last budget, and we decided to up our fund balance because that's was uh a period that some folks on the council wanted us to do, did we have to pull any services to the citizens out of the budget by doing that?
None that I'm aware of, of, of reducing or negatively impacting any services, no.
They did?
No, no, sir.
Councilman Samuel?
Yes, I, I just want to uh commend uh Councilmember Turner uh for his relentless uh efforts to get uh budget information to clarify some of the uh things that were circulating throughout the community.
Brain bleed. And so just wanted to bring that up to the dais and, and just bring that for council, what we perhaps could do to uh, to bring some recognition and appreciation to them.
So given that it's an ongoing investigation, I would, I would ask the council be cautious in, in, in not doing something until the police department has concluded their investigation of all parties involved.
Including the two citizens?
Of all parties involved.
Then I yield to the council of our attorney and I just did it uh and say an appreciation, we're done.
All right, Councilman Turner?
Uh, just again, you know, thank you to staff uh for getting that presentation together. I encourage citizens to encourage people to actually watch it and get a better understanding of, you know, how government works and the budget works. Uh, one thing in the city of Waco, and I'm actually trying to coordinate a meeting with our city manager and one of the city councilmen. But in the city of Waco, they have a budget tool on their website where you can go into that city's website and you can literally play with the budget as a citizen. You have a, a president's name on the freeways and I, I think if we need to set up something with Mr. Gonzalez with Tex Dot, I think that's very necessary because she's not the first one who brought that up. Uh, another thing is Mr. Daniel, he's came up a few times about a house bill. I'm not as familiar with it, but maybe public safety can get together with staff and we can see if there could be something that can be explored. I appreciate everybody comments, whether it be positive or negative or, or just their opinion. I appreciate it because if we don't listen to any others' opinions, we can't really get what we need to get done. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilman Gess, oh, great, Councilman, all right, Councilman Gess, go ahead.
You know, we uh had a lo- lengthy discussion today about what should happen to the Gilbert Building. And I pride myself on being a fiscally conservative uh councilman. I don't think it would necessarily be fiscally conservative for council to vote to go forward with demolition of a building, which would cost anywhere between half million and a million of your taxpayer dollars when we have a developer that is sitting there saying, look, I'm going to try to save this historic building. Uh, yes, he's been given a pass on more than one occasion, but he's also demonstrated that he is uh willing to put some money where his mouth is and has uh actually started doing a lot of work on that building. I, I can't see how it would be a sound fiscally conservative move to obligate our taxpayer dollars to, you know, take that building down. And uh, so that's why I voted the way that I did on that. With regard to the Little Woodrose incident, um, I applaud our police officer for the actions that he took to try to keep a dangerous intoxicated, or what appeared to him at least to be an intoxicated person off the road. We saw just uh, you know, a few days later, how people can be on the road and drive recklessly and uh tragic results can happen. So I am chagrined by the number of people that have taken to social media to ridicule this police officer for his actions and find fault on him for what he was doing. Uh, in that moment, in that moment, he was doing what he thought was right to protect and serve the citizens of this community and to uphold the oath that he swore to took. And uh, you can uh second guess or third guess, but if you weren't there and you were not there in that moment, um, you really should not be sitting there making fun of him and uh, you know, what, what he was trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Durio?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the, well, Councilman Turner was talking about that on the freeway. It's looked like somebody did take a pressure washer and pressure washed his name. And it's right on uh ten where it's going from north to east, right before you get off Eleventh Street. And also uh, Mr. Campezi, he has been up here before discussing this child custody deal and H. House Bill nine sixty-nine. Um, if I could get, if someone could look into that and, and uh give us some information on it and uh see is this something that we need to do? And uh, if I, if y'all just bear with me, I have a little, if lower tax rates, strategic plan implementation, the starts of Parks Master Plan, the creation of the beautification fund and a fund balance at nine million dollars over the requirement. Some of the other stuff he accomplished, sidewalk repair, Fourth Street rehabilitation, artificial intelligence committee, Rogers Street, uh Rogers Park Dog Park, Rogers and Sprout Park Pavilion, five fifty-five main, the homeless camp ordinance, stable bond rating and pay classification implemented. And these, these are not the end of the winds, uh Beaumont experience under uh Mr. Williams. In addition to giving him a raise, giving a raise, giving, in addition to him giving a raise to our civilian employees every year since he's been here, he also negotiated a successful contract with the police union, all while never asking for a raise. He moved here from Lufkin and lives in Beaumont. He was also integral, integral in a water sewer rate study, funding a chamber economic development strategy plan, strategic plan, sewer line replacement, tasers, license plate readers, vehicles for PD, ambulances, fire trucks, et cetera. Citywide ditching program, the list goes on and on. Beaumont is a pretty place to live because of issues he's been able to tackle. He has a vision for our city that is attainable and he is willing to put in the work to attain that vision, to make our city the shining star it has potentials to be. Under Kenneth's management, Beaumont can continue to grow and reach new heights for its future and its residents. Kenneth was initially hired to bring new eyes to our old problems and come up with new solutions. And that's exactly what he has done. As we know, Beaumont leadership has sometimes been resistant to new ideas, but it's the responsibility of the city council to work with the manager to bring new ideas to fruition. It is the only way Beaumont can move into the future and continue to grow and prosper. So those folks are saying, you know, our uh, the bad things they say about the city manager, um, that's my response to it and I hope council agrees with my response to the, I mean, I've heard people say he was worthless and, and all kinds of negative things about our city manager. And uh, that's my response and I hope council will agree with it. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Chris. I'm certainly not in this for the accolades, but thanks anyway. Thank, I appreciate that. Uh, I thank our finance department for this uh, their workshop and what they put together today. I thought it was very informative, very comprehensive, getting good information. And I think it let the community know that the city of Beaumont is not in financial.
There's, as he continues to recover. And with that, uh, the meeting is adjourned.